Right here, everybody ready?
Yes.
Hey, Bev. All right, good afternoon, everybody. We're here for the Selma City Council special meeting. It's July 1st, 2024 at 5:45 PM in the much cooler Selma City Council chambers than outside at 1710 Tucker Street, Selma, California 93662. The teleconference phone number is 301-715-8592. The webinar ID is 891-6864-5005. When on the phone if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand and we'll select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Trigio?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here. Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member has a potential conflict of interest may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code section 549-54.2b. Oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item on the special meeting agenda over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and address the city council only in their remarks. Do we have any oral communications about the special meeting item at this time? With that, we are going to recess into closed session where we will have a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation. It'll be significant exposure to litigation pursuant to 549-56-9B. And that's a claim by Highland Road CLP. And we will be going in the break room for that. And we'll be back as soon as our special presentation is done. Thank you for our special closed session.
Think about that, man.
All right, we are back from closed session. City Attorney, do we have reportable action tonight?
Yes, we do. I have, I will report that the council voted three to two to reject the claim from Highland Rose CLP. The yes votes were Councilmember Trujillo, Mayor Pro Tim Cho, and Councilmember Mendoza Navarro. The no votes were Mayor Robertson and Councilmember Gara.
Thank you. With that, we will adjourn the closed session and open up our Selma City Council regular meeting. It's still July first, 2024. It's six oh five PM and we are in the Selma City Council chambers at seventeen ten Tucker Street in Selma, California. Nine three six six two. Our teleconference phone number is three zero one seven one five eight five nine two. The webinar ID is eight nine one six eight six four five zero zero five. When you're on the phone, if you wish to address the council during the public comment portion of the agenda, press star nine to raise your hand. We'll select you from the meeting queue. Press star six to unmute and mute yourself. Okay. And tonight, we're going to have our invocation from Pastor Efren Delgado of the Church of God.
Thank you guys for having me.
Thank you guys for joining. Let us bow our heads as we praise, pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you and are gathered in the mighty name of Jesus Christ, Father God. We exalt you today, Father God, and we thank you for being at the center of everything, Father God, for being at the center of this meeting. Father God, we just thank you for blessing Selma. As Selma continues to prosper and thrive, Father God, it comes with both good and bad, Father God. And we pray, Father God, in unity, Father, to protect our schools, Father, protect our children, protect our, the, the first responders, Father God. We thank you for the wisdom that you give us each and every single day, Father God, to help us overcome the darkness that is, isn't, that is in this world, Father God. And as you can see, Father God, there are many gathered here today, Father God, because they all have some form of opinion, Father God. And we just pray, Father God, for this meeting to be peaceful, but not peace that comes from human, Father God, peace that can only come from you, Father God, wisdom that can only come from you, Father God. We pray, Father God, for a continuation of unity throughout the city of Selma, Father God, within our council members and the citizens of Selma, Father God. And we thank you for this day, Father God, for you have blessed this day, Father God. You have will for each and every one of us to be here today, Father God, including those who are watching online, Father. And as I said, this meeting ends, Father God, I just pray, Father, that you continue to keep your hedge of protection around each and every one of us, Father God, as we go our separate ways, Father. And we give you all the praise and all the glory, Father God. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Budge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Gara?
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Here.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cho?
Here.
Mayor Robertson?
Here.
Potential conflicts of interest. Any council member has a potential conflict of interest may down, may now identify the item and recuse themselves from discussing and voting on the matter. Agenda changes or deletions to better accommodate members of the public or inconvenience in the order of presentation. Items on the agenda may not be presented or acted upon in the order listed. Additions to the agenda may be added only pursuant to California Government Code, Section five four nine five four dot two B. Does council have any changes they'd like to make to the agenda items tonight? I was looking at one, item five, consideration of a resolution amending the schedule of fees and charges for refuse collection rates. I know we have a number of folks that are here to talk about a, a general trash pickup transitions. They might be interested in listening and not having to wait around for the amended schedule of fees and charges. Would council be amenable to taking item five and moving it to number one? Is that okay?
Better.
Okay. With that, okay, so we'll move item five to item one on the regular business agenda. Next item, oral communications. At this time, any member of the public may address the city council regarding any item over which the council has jurisdiction. No action or discussion will be taken on any item not on the agenda. Issues raised will be referred to the city manager for review. Members of the public are asked to limit their remarks to three minutes and asked to direct their comments towards the city council, not city employees. Does anyone have anything they would like to say at this time for oral communications? If so, please step up.
Good evening. My name is Abraham Segbini. I reside at seventeen oh eight Aspen Street here in Selma for the last fifteen years. Respectfully, we, I submitted points to all the council members on our last meeting on the seventeenth of June. And at the bottom, we requested something, some kind of an answers. And I was wondering if the city council had a chance to look over it, or have a chance to read it, or have any comments on it.
Because it's not an agenda item, Mr. Segbini, we can't comment on it. But I know I did review it, and I'm confident that the council members reviewed it as well. And that's as far as I can take it tonight during oral communications.
Wait for an answer within the next couple of weeks, a month.
Um, it depends on whether it becomes an agenda item to consider the points that you raised and brought to the council. And it's much appreciated that you did bring those points to the council.
Thank you.
You.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Patricia Kengas. I live on the twenty-seven hundred Lock of A Street. I have been a resident for forty-eight years. My concern is the new schedule for the trash pickup going from the alleys to the front of the, the residence. Concern being if anything were to happen to my husband. I've had major back surgery, spinal fusion. For me to take three trash cans from the back of my residence and bring them up to the front of my residence would be very difficult for me. And if I should drop one of the cans for any reason, I would not be able to pick it up because of the limitations I have. I'm also concerned why they went from the alleys to the front part of the house when for forty-eight years and for some residents, it's been seventy years that the trash pickup has always been in the alley. One concern, if they were saying for, to keep the alleys clean, I called about a week and a half ago and reported a refrigerator that had been dumped off early mornings, sometime during the night while we were all sleeping. That refrigerator is still there and a potential hazard to a child. I would just like to know a little bit more why the public was not that, why we were not informed sooner that this was going to be a change coming. We, we know we're supposed to put our trash out tonight to the front of the house. We don't know what side of the street it goes on, on A Street. We just know that it goes in front of the residence. I find it hard to believe that the trash truck has to go all the way down and then do a U-turn and go back down the other side of A Street to pick up those, those containers. I do-
Oral communication, so we can engage, ma'am. But what I can tell you is the council did request at the last council meeting to put the new process procedures, the new trash hauler collection procedures on the agenda as an agenda item. It was not put on this meeting by staff. It will be put on, so we're told, the next meeting by staff. So I would invite you and anybody else concerned with issues about the trash collection to join the city council and come to the next city council meeting, which will be in two weeks.
Two weeks.
From today at six PM.
But in the meantime, our trash goes out tonight.
In the meantime, your trash goes out tonight, and I would recommend calling Mid Valley in the meantime. And maybe we have some Mid Valley representatives. That's one of the reasons council agreed to move item, agenda item five up to the first item. There might be some Mid Valley reps here.
Okay, I'm a little confused. So we should take the trash to the front of the house tonight, not the-
I'm not telling you to take the trash to a particular location. I'm saying contact Mid Valley, and we'll be discussing all this in two weeks.
Another concern, just for the residents that live-
And I did talk, so you can take a little extra time. Go ahead.
On McCall. That is dangerous street. My neighbors behind me have had cars up in their yard. For them to have to go and put their trash cans out on McCall, that's really dangerous.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Jim Avalo, seventeen oh one Dinuba. I'll dismiss with the trash. And, but the other item I want to talk about is the things that are requested by individuals in, in our community, and also items that are, that are requested for, how would I say it? The word used is items that are what we call public actions, comments by the people. But I noticed they're not put on agendas or, you know, comments. You know, in the past, it used to be that way in the past. If someone made a comment, they, it was put on their, on the record. That way, the citizens know we're, we're being transparent. We're not trying to hide anything. When we see things are not put on there, that gives the public a question mark behind, you know, in their minds. And when individuals request public records and, and it takes time, okay, I understand. But usually, it's done in a timely manner. You know, all I can say that, you know, you have to address some of these issues that the public's requesting right away, public act records and stuff like this, so we can alleviate some of the, the doubts in our community. When you delay things and put things aside, that's doubts in the citizens of Selma. The other issue I'm going to talk about is the item five. I noticed that the, the attorney is going, has her name on that person. Normally, that should be a staff member discussing that. It shouldn't be the attorney's name on that issue on, on that.
You can bring that up during item five, Mr. Avalo.
Okay, just that you know.
Which will be item one tonight.
All right. Thank you.
My name is Joe Martinez. I live at twenty-two thirty-six Jackson Street here in Selma. I'm eighty years old. I have two knee replacements and three back surgeries. I have a monitor built into my back and my gait is only twenty-two inches wide. I'm in the middle of the block and I have to bring all three garbage scans from the middle of the block, all the way back around, all three, and all the way back. Now, I have a petition, a complaint here written down, and also a petition with signatures, which I would like to present to the board, and also proof here that I do have a monitor in my back. And it's been there since, have model number and serial number, and also the date that it was installed in twenty eighteen. So.
Mr. Martinez, if you could present that to City Clerk Rivera. The petition, she can get, she's right there. She can get a copy of that.
Thank you.
And then she'll circulate a copy to council members, city clerk. Thank you. Please.
Stella Ramirez, Selma, California. I want to make a few comments regarding the city of Selma codes and ordinances that was passed on February fifth, two thousand and twenty-four this year. Under chapter one, garbage regulations, there's no mention of ADA. ADA is Americans with Disabilities Act. This act was passed and signed into law by President George H. W. Bush on July twenty-sixth, nineteen ninety. The ADA protects individuals with disabilities, a disability that substantially limits major life activities and protects those people with public accommodations. Therefore, moving heavy trash cans to the front street falls under this law. My question to you is, how do you plan on protecting those citizens with this protective law? Also, under eight one one code definition for disabled customers, there is mention of a discount for anyone with a disability that can apply at City Hall for a garbage fee discount. There is mention they need to provide adequate documentation of proof for approval. Under the same eight one one code, this discount also applies to seniors. Any senior can apply at City Hall for a garbage fee discount, having reached the age of sixty years old or older. They shall have the responsibility of adequately documenting that he or she meets the terms of this definition. Also, I would like to mention, and I want to piggyback off of what Jim Avalo said. I have worked over thirty years in administration. Minutes being recorded are not being written in detail when the general public speaks. Only names are written in the agenda packet minutes. This is extremely important to have as it pertains to information from the public. I feel that what we say should be written into the minutes, as everything else said here is written. I feel that what we say should be written into the minutes as everything else said here is written and recorded. Lastly, we need a Spanish interpreter. We have a lot of Spanish-speaking community members who would like to attend these meetings but can't because of the English, my English language barrier. Thank you.
Thank you.
Gary Ford thirteen twenty-five floral.
Is your mic on, sir?
Four or five years ago, you sent out a thing about trash. Okay, that, that was never enforced. So are we going to have another trash pickup out of the alley? Who's going to enforce it? Because there's a lot of people are not moving their trash cans out of the alley. As July first, they're supposed to be out. But you drive around a lot of alleys and there they are. Is it going to be enforced? Is code enforcement going to go out there and write people tickets and sat, or something and force them to move them out of the alley? Or is it just going to be something we're just going to skip over again, like a lot of things we do with code enforcement? That's all I got to say, but we need to address that.
Thank you, Mr. Ford. Next, please.
Hello, uh, my name is Homer Leha and I'm from McCall Village Mobile Home Park. I got two questions for you. Um, I've been having meetings with the Mid Valley about the charges for our park. And they all come with uh, over a thousand dollars, two thousand dollars, and they never give me any exact amount. And the last time I talked to one of them, they said that we have to call the city. That the city is the one who, who put the rates on everybody. I don't even know how much I'm going to pay on my own home. So uh, I would like to know if you guys know how much are we going to pay? I give to the, uh, to the receptionists here. I gave them two bills from Waste Management, how much I've been paying. And they've got any answer from anybody here in the op, in the city. So that's what I'd like to know. If you are the one who's going to put the rates or them. They want to charge us for us, for everything, for everything. They, they didn't want my dumpsters. They bring me dumpsters they have, they're smaller, and they cut the days of pickup and garbage. So they also, I think they want to charge me for those dumpsters. Um, we do all the work. I had the manpower, I had the pickups, I have, have to put gas, I have to put the workers' comp, insurance for the pickup, everything. And they just have to come through the main gate and dump. And they want over a thousand dollars, I don't know why. So I like, if you can look into this and let us know. Uh, I'm doing all this for the residents of the park. Because the more we pay, you know, it's uh, we have to do something about that. But um, I'm confused with all this new deals about put this here, put this that, but I mean, everything's changed. I, I just imagine how stink is going to be all over the place with this uh, new changes about put all the waste food and, and the, the green together. And it's going to be only once a week. I used to have Tuesdays, Fridays and Wednesday for recycle. So we gotta do everything, pick up recycle and garbage and everything. So that's what I'm here for, if you can look into it. And unfortunately, I've been trying for the past three weeks. Um, getting some answers from here and nobody called me until one time I, I talked to somebody here and within an hour, I got a call from uh, Mid Valley.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. We'll have another agenda item, we'll absolutely be talking in the future. Thank you. Next, please.
Ryan Savio, Selma resident. Um, for the record, I want to state what I'm about to say is public record, factual, and I can provide proof. During the council meeting on September fifth, twenty twenty-three, at the one hour, two minute and five second mark, Blanca Mendoza Navarro quickly chimed in that she wanted to make a motion to award Mid Valley the contract with the city of Selma without any sort of discussion from her peers. But Mayor Robertson wanted to have a discussion before voting. When it came time to vote, Mendoza Navarro Cho Trujillo voted for Mid Valley. Now, because of this poorly made decision, it has resulted in a lawsuit that is currently open between the city of Selma and Caglia Environmental, who is the lowest bid compared to Mid Valley by twenty-five percent lower. And by city, and by city of Selma's municipal code eight-one-eleven, it required, it requires to award these contracts to the lowest bidder if the city engages in the bidding process. How is it that the city attorney is getting paid two hundred thousand dollars for two, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five physical year? And didn't catch this huge liability that now we are currently facing? This should result in a termination, in my opinion. Fast forward to April fifth, twenty twenty-four, at the one hour, forty-eight minute and forty-second mark. Once again, Blanca Mendoza Navarro stated the subject of a financial, uh, stated the subject of a finance director came up. But for me, it is just a title. It's, the work is still being done, our bills are getting paid, payroll is being met. At the end of the day, the city manager is ultimately responsible for the operations of the city. A title is just a title. I can guarantee that if we had a financial director, none of this would be happening because he or she would abide by the municipal codes and the city of Selma wouldn't have these lawsuits. So no, it's not just a title. To the three council members, why is it when it comes to our city's finances, budgeting doesn't seem to be in your vocabulary? I don't think you can run your house, I don't think you run your households or businesses like this. So why continue to do it to our city? We will not stop calling you out for all your wrongdoing and we will not, and we will get to the bottom of this. Again, I want to thank Mayor Scott Robertson and Council Member Sarah Guerra for your continued hard work, dedication and love for our city and its citizens. You two are the true definition, definition of what it means to be a mayor and a council member. Thank you.
Next, please.
Hello, I'm a resident from Selma and my address is twenty thirty-four floral. I'm here to speak.
Your name?
Oh, Mercedes Amora. I'm here to speak against the Mid Valley trash. First of all, because I live on a, a heavy street, which is floral and my guy across street is McCall. The school, the parents that are going to drop their kids off, the line is all the way to uh, I think it's Woods, um, Thompson Street, the cars, because they're all waiting to drop their kids off. And the right turn, the left turn is always packed, so you can't, barely three to four cars are going through. And I think that's going to involve the picking of the trashes of those people that are to drop their kids at school. And uh, and second, I, I believe that, I don't think we were told about that the city, the council had voted on Mid Valley. Nobody knew about that. And you guys just took it upon yourselves to make that vote. And I think that was rightly wrong. But everybody can have a say-so to that. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Hello, my name is James Montalvo, two eight five one Hall Street, Selma resident. Um, I just also had a um, comment on the trash pickup. I don't know how it's going to work on the blocks of A Street, B Street and D Street. There's multiple cars for each family in that, in that zone. And I don't know how the trash cans are going to be picked up with the cars along the side of the road also. That's going to be a big problem. I don't know how um, you guys went forward without our um, vote in this and didn't consider that. And I'm sure there's multiple neighborhoods in, in the city also in that um, in that um, situation. That's just my take on that right there.
Thank you. Next, please.
Michael Barone at two thousand three Alton. I just wanted to share.
I'm going to pull up your microphone, Sproune. Thank you.
I just wanted to share that um, all this issue of the trash pickup, of you know, putting the trash cans now in front. Why wasn't that brought about when the initial uh, uh, contract with this uh, uh, Mid Valley was brought up? It's brought a lot of problems. I think it's uh, you guys need to read and see what these companies are offering you. I've heard right now like it, Caglia was a lower bidder, so was even Waste Manu- Management. Why did we get the biggest, highest-priced trash collector? I don't understand that. Is that true? Was that put up to bid? Can you tell us what was the comparison? Is this public uh, um, we can know publicly? What was the bids actually? Because we're paying for it. We're paying for it and the businesses are paying for it. And you guys say, hey, this is, you know, you guys, what you're going to get. But we need a, those bids, those amounts of money needed to be presented publicly so we could know what we're, what we're getting into. Now we have a mess. Because there's a lot of people here that, you know, are complaining because the trash has to be brought to front. That's what I would say. I would say, look at Kingsburg, I looked at, and the same company, all the trash cans are in the alleys. You tell me. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Gabriel Hovell, fourteen fifty-one Mill Street. Um, I'm going to speak upon uh, the funding from the city that was uh, petitioned to go towards the homeless. And I just wanted to let you guys know that this is as a Selma community outreach ministry, this is what we do. You know, I started out of the trunk of a car feeding homeless. Um, it was something that was brought to us from the Lord. And um, I just wanted to take in consideration that we should connect, go hand in hand, shoulder to shoulder and partner up so that we can make a homeless person into a regular civilian, you know? They get overlooked, you know? And I just wanted to throw that out there, you know? Um, we stay in two thousand one, Witson. It used to be a bar where the devil turned into his evil, the Lord turned around for his glory. So that's all I wanted to say. God bless y'all.
Thank you. Next, please.
Rick Cortez, seventeen fifty-one McCall. Uh, today I was with a friend and he says, I want to show you something on Yerba Street. That's a twenty-four hundred block of Yerba. My mother lives there and she's been told that she has to move her garbage to the front. She usually has it done in the, in the alleyway. But uh, when I went over there, I noticed that, and he showed me, he says, look at, how is she going to have her gar- her garbage picked up? There's a family next to them that has seven cars parked right across there and they stay there. Now, how is, how are they going to have the people pick up their trash? When they have those, that family has seven cars parked right in front of her house and maybe next or the other way around. How is she going to get her? I know what the trash people are going to say, wow, the cars are there, we can't, we can't pick it up. See, so there's just another one of other things that needs to be thought of here. So I thought I'd bring that out. And if you wish to go over there, you'll see those seven cars parked right in front of this lady's house. Okay, so there you go.
Next speaker.
Jennifer Guerra thirteen sixty-four Stillman Street. I live in front of a school. I called Mil- I called Mid Valley and told them what problem this was going to cause. I do not have a driveway where I'm going to put my trash. Cars are parked there. All down my street, there's employees from Wilson who are parked there. Where am I going to put my trash? We have an alley that I had used for over twenty years. I was in Kingsburg, they're picking up the trash. Who's the one that came up with the idea that it's good better to put the trash in the front of a house? I already saw trash on the floor, on the ground. Kingsburg is doing this, they're picking, you're, they're picking up trash in Kingsburg. Where are we coming up with these ideas that it's better to put it up in front? I want an answer in two weeks, something, I want an answer from someone here. I'm paying my taxes for this and I know the prices are going to be going up too. Please, I won't, no, I, I demand an answer. Two weeks.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Isaías Salamantes, I live at twenty-four twenty Country Club Lane, Selma, California. I'm here to tell you that it's a bad idea putting the trash cans, if you've got a good alley, put the trash cans in the front. I'm seventy-three years old, I'm going to be seventy-four, June, this is July, I'm going to be seventy-four. I've got Parkinson's. I've got a bad knees, can hardly, my wife's disabled too. And I had no problem since I lived there twelve years, ten years at that address. I had no problems putting my trash right there in the alley. It's a real nice alley. And other parts of Selma, they have good, good alleys too, because they've, they've been renovated about ten, fifteen years ago. So I'm opposed to it and uh, if you start a petition or something like that, I'll, I'll go with that petition, my signature, because that's, that's very wrong. You should have consulted with us first, thank you.
Anybody on the phone, online? Come on up, sir.
Once again, I'd like to greet everybody. Mr. Mayor, council people, citizens, good evening. I just want to say, um, how many times do they have to come and tell you the same thing? Over and over and over. And if you guys must know, the person responsible, because people call and talk to the trash people, and they said the city manager, it was the city manager's decision to change the way trash gets picked up. It gets tired and coming every time and the same thing comes up every time. Aren't you guys tired of it? They are. There, there seem, there needs to be changes made and it starts with you. If not, things are going to change in November. And you will see. Thank you.
Anyone else with a comment? We have anyone online or on the phone? Okay, we still have some speakers in the audience.
Hi, my name's Kelly Guerra. I live at twenty-one forty-five Cypress Street. My garbage has been in the alley since I've lived there over twenty years. I'm disabled and I'm on the liver transplant list for a rare liver disease. I'm not supposed to lift more than five pounds. My cyst can burst and then I would have to be rushed to San Francisco. My back is bad, I need to have a procedure for that too. I do not and will not put my garbage in the front. It was not in the contract and is only being requested by certain board members. Our city manager. Many seniors and disabled people cannot do this and shame on you for pushing this on them. That's all I have to say.
Next speaker.
Rosa Gallardo Robertson, ten fifty-seven Mill Street. My question is on September, let's see, September fifth, twenty twenty-three. There was a meeting here for, I believe, and you could, I'm not, reg, uh, two million dollar uh, contract with four trash supposedly bids that were out. Three were supposed to come back to present. Bev Cho did not allow Waste Management to come back, so we don't even know what their rates were going to be or, or what. Um, so the three that voted for Mid Valley, and as you guys all saw, if you go on news around Selma or real news around Selma, you could see the quick videos how quickly uh, Blanca Mendoza was just ready to move and make that motion and not really care about the people's input. And then, of course, Bo Tem, um, second that, and there was the three votes with uh, Mr. Trujillo. So with that said, did you guys even have the contracts in front of you? Did you? Did you read the contracts before you made your decision? Decision? Did you guys have any questions about the handicap? Any of the ordinance, what, you know, normally you're supposed to go, uh, with the lower rate for the residents of Salma? That's your job. Find the best rate. Um, it doesn't even look like you guys even cared about the citizens of Salma. You seem to have just knew what trash company you were gonna just go with. Kind of really sad for us citizens. Another thing is, why are you even up there? If you're gonna continuous make decisions that affect our general fund, affect us citizens taxpayer money. It is very, very clear for four years, watching the way you make your decisions, three, two vote constantly. You truly act like this is your bank account. We need to remind you that it is not. It is not. Congratulations to you, Blanca, for receiving the executive director, um, uh, for Madera Housing Authority. Um, I'll, you know, you're gonna make some really good money, but you gotta remember, you're in Madera eight to five, Monday through Friday. You're not here in our town, watching Monday through Friday. So please make sure, um, you step down. If you guys do not want to care for our town, step down, do not run. And the people that are gonna run, make sure you question them on everything they're gonna be running for. Thank you.
Anybody else with a comment at this time? Do we have anybody online or on the phone who'd like to make a comment during oral communications?
As a reminder to the callers online, please use your raise your hand feature and we will add you to the meeting queue. For those calling in, please use star nine to raise your hand. Mayor Robertson, at this time I see no hands raised.
Thank you. With that, we will move on from oral communications to our first of three special presentations tonight. Our first special presentation is the T-ball coaches recognition. Our Parks and Community Services Liz Martinez will be discussing this item and bringing up our coaches.
Um, Mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for having me here tonight. Um, so I did want to give some special recognition to all of our T-ball coaches that are here. Um, we had twelve T-ball teams this year, which was a really big success. Um, as you may know, volunteering is very difficult and being able to rustle up twelve head coaches along with um, an additional two, um,
Excuse me, Ms. Martinez, do you want to just hang on a second? We've got some, some folks that are heading on out the chambers. Thank you. We can give you our full attention.
Absolutely. No worries.
Okay. You ready?
I am ready. So let me start over. My name is Liz Martinez. I'm the Recreation Supervisor for the City of Salma. Um, I've been here for about five and a half years now. So, um, again, this is my fifth year, um, running the T-ball program. Again, it's an honor to do this program. It's one of my favorites. It's one of the cutest things, seeing the kids out there playing and, um, and you guys will actually get a glimpse of some of the games. So, um, staff has prepared a video, um, kind of showcasing what the season looked like. And so bear with us, it is the cutest thing. So again, just wanted to take this moment to thank our coaches for being here tonight and those that couldn't make it again, just.
Excuse me, in the back, can you close that door? Just hear the folks that are on their way out. Thank you. Thanks very much. All right, go ahead.
All right, without further ado, enjoy this video. We are by no means experts in graphic design and media and all that good stuff. And so we gave it our best shot, but again, that kind of just summarized our season. It was a wonderful season. Um, all teams had a perfect season. It was a perfect record. There was no losses. They all won because they all showed up and they all participated. So that was the best part. So without further ado, I'd like to have all my coaches come up and I'd like to present you with the certificate.
Come on up this way. Get a picture after everybody gets their certificate. Tony, how you doing? Wait, council, do you want to stand and we'll take a picture with all the coaches? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you guys do. It was a great season. Okay, our next is our Parks Make Life Better proclamation.
All right, so, um, this is a very important proclamation for me. So working in Recreation Community Services, every year, the California Parks and Recreation Society claims July as National Parks and Recreation, um, Month. And so that's what this proclamation is today. It's in celebration of celebrating all our parks and just enjoying and being able to utilize our green space. And so, um, it is an honor to accept this proclamation and, um, I'll take this moment to kind of give you guys a little tidbit about our Parks Master Plan that we're working on. And so city staff is working with QK to develop our Parks Master Plan, which will guide us into the future. And so before you walked in, if you didn't notice, on the door, I hung our, um, our QR codes. So the survey is both in English and in Spanish. And so that gives you the opportunity to give us feedback, um, on what it is that you're looking for or what your needs are in our parks. So I highly encourage everybody to take the survey to give us that feedback that we're looking for. And if you have a moment, if you could also share that survey and have others in the community participate in that survey, um, it would just, it would be very helpful. The goal is to be able to develop a plan that's gonna guide us into the future. And so that means possible amenities and activities for our community. And so you guys are the driving force for my job. So please give me some feedback and hopefully we can, um, um, get some results and a good turnout from that. So thank you.
Thanks for your presentation. That will move on to our third special presentation of the evening, evening, which is the Downtown Strategic Plan Presentation.
Evening, council. Um, if council recalls, um, uh, you know, a while back, uh, we conducted a two-day workshop at the Salma Library uh, to garner, you know, input regarding, uh, what downtown, uh, could be uh, with our consultant, Raimi and Associates, as well as sub consultants, Fear and Peers and EPS. Um, at the end of the two-day event, there was a presentation, uh, given on the findings of that report. Um, to keep some of that momentum going, we've brought Raimi back to give that presentation in front of the council and the community. Because obviously, uh, the community at large was not, uh, at the library. There were folks present at the library, but we wanted to, uh, share the information that was, um, necessarily discovered, but, um, contributed and, and documented during that, during that activity. So with that, we have, um, members of, uh, the consultant team here to give a presentation. Thank you.
Hello. Hello, thank you. Um, I have a slide deck to share. Let me bring it up. All right, confirming everyone can see slide deck. Yes, we can. Great. Well, uh, thank you, thank you, um, city manager, mayor and council for having, um, us here today. I'm joined by Amy Lappin, uh, principal at EPS, who is part of our team. Let's see here. Our team consisted of, uh, Raimi and Associates, EPS, which is Economic Planning Systems, Fear and Peers to help with mobility and Amy Concepts to, um, uh, help with, uh, the project. Uh, the strategic plan goals have been to develop a shared vision and identity for downtown, build on downtown's existing assets and strengths, identify new opportunities, identify strategies to revitalize downtown and create implementable recommendations and actions. The area that we were working in, um, represents about sixty-five acres of the downtown core. It includes Lincoln Park, um, and also the, the UPRR right of way. We did a charrette approach, um, for the, uh, the idea generation part here, where we came together as a group of consultants with city staff. Uh, some of you here at the Dais, uh, partook in some of the meetings. And we, we came with the idea of, um, working together to create, um, uh, implementable solutions. And we, we started with a tour of the city, um, getting the lay of the land and understanding the unique bits of downtown. And throughout, uh, the weekend that we were here, we had opportunities for the community and city staff to come in and participate in the charrette uh, that concluded on Saturday evening with a, uh, with a version of this presentation where we, we brought forth, um, four main strategies for implementation. Uh, we started with existing conditions and strengths. Um, you know, the design character of downtown has great historic buildings located along High, First and East French Streets. It's a consistent grid, uh, lined with historic streetlights. It has a lot of character already. There's wonderful public art and murals that showcase the local history. Um, there are these nice brick accents along the sidewalks and curb edges. Um, but of course, the, this, the majority of the street trees have recently been removed. And it's one of the things we'll talk about in solutions. And it also has diagonal on-street parking stalls. I will be, um, turning it over to Amy now to kind of talk about the socioeconomic, uh, existing conditions. And then we'll, we'll talk about the strategies.
Thanks, Chris. Uh, good, good evening, Mayor Robertson and city council members. Um, again, my name is Amy Lappin and I'm a principal with EPS. Um, we evaluated the socioeconomic characteristics of the city, uh, to provide some context and help shape the downtown strategic plan. Um, with a current population of about twenty-four thousand residents, uh, we found that over five thousand residents, or twenty percent of the city's population, live in or immediately surrounding the downtown area. A large majority of residents identify as Hispanic or Latino, are relatively young, um, with an average age of just over thirty and have a high rate of participation in the labor force. These characteristics highlight the need for social spaces downtown where friends and family can gather and present opportunities to celebrate the vibrant and culturally, culturally rich community. Next slide, please. We also reviewed existing economic conditions and trends in downtown and found that there has not been any new development activity in at least the last decade. Currently, non-residential space downtown has a very low vacancy rate, indicating limited available retail or office space for new businesses. There are about a hundred and forty businesses operating downtown. However, about three quarters of the businesses are service providers rather than retail establishments. Thus, although the city generates a substantial amount of annual taxable sales, these sales are based on the strength of automobile sales at the auto mall rather than downtown businesses. These findings indicate that there are, there is demand for more retail and restaurant space, uh, presenting the need for a phased approach to diversifying the retail offerings as well as the opportunity for new investment downtown. Next slide. Um, we also looked at housing conditions. Um, residents have a comparatively low average, um, housing cost, with downtown area residents enjoying even lower costs. Housing vacancies have declined over the past decade, mirroring broader county and state trends. Um, while average rental prices are relatively affordable, average home prices remain out of reach for many households. Um, but the combination of low vacancy rates, household sizes that have trended downward and affordable rental, relatively affordable rental rates may support opportunities for renter occupied housing and, uh, mixed-use development in the downtown. I'll hand it back over to Chris.
Thank you, Amy. So now I'm gonna walk through some of the key strategies, uh, that we worked on throughout the charrette. We identified four key strategies. The first is to create a strong identity and theme downtown. Part of that is continuing to implement, uh, some of the, the facade work that you guys have going on to create a unified facade concept for downtown. Add signage and wayfinding to make it easier for people to get around. A key one is street trees as identity. It's a real opportunity, um, to create a place, also some gateway and concept art. The second, uh, key strategy is to bring people downtown. The way to have vibrant businesses and successful businesses is to get people downtown. One way to do that is increase visibility from the freeway. Also, create places to recreate, have special events. You already have a few great special events. Kind of bringing those up, adding entertainment, new housing, people living downtown, they'll spend money downtown and also murals and public art. And key, um, and, and particular to, to this younger demographic is really creating places to socialize, places to identify, um, within the city of Salma. And that includes new restaurants, uh, live music and entertainment and outdoor dining. And lastly, improve mobility. If there's gonna be more people downtown, it needs to be a safer place connecting to the rest of the city uh, with improved pedestrian access, traffic. uh with improved pedestrian access, traffic calming and opportunities to bring people in with active transportation like bikes. So this is a drawing that we produced while we were here that kind of highlights um elements um that that fit into kind of all four strategies there. And I'm going to kind of walk you through um the three main ones here. The the first one is to add street trees and festive lighting. So we developed a, an initial kind of draft concept here of putting um street trees uh within the the roadway in between parking stalls. And the key element here is not only to create a beautiful place, but also increase canopy cover to reduce the heat island effect and create a pleasant and cool place where people and businesses will want to be. The great thing about Selma is that the utilities serving downtown are located in the in the alley. And that leaves the roadways free for planting. Uh not all cities have that opportunity. It allows for roots to grow and for you to get big trees. Um one thing that we'll we'll kind of talk about and to to discuss further as time goes by is that there are trade-offs here between parking and street trees. But there are also areas along First Street um and East Front Street where more parking can be added. So to implement this plan on these downtown core streets, um it would result in a loss of twelve to sixteen spaces. But you will gain a lot of tree cover in doing that, um up to forty percent. Uh this has also been implemented in a number of places um throughout the Central Valley, most recently in Saris. Uh we are going to have a call with the the city um public works team in the next month to get more information on how they funded and uh structured maintenance for their trees. But here you can see the street trees are located in between the diagonal parking stalls, about halfway through, so you can get access to your doors. And in this case, it's flush with the tree uh with the street grade and has um permeable pavers that go down into the the root structure. Um the strategy was also implemented on School Street in Lowdy. And this, you kind of see a little bit different strategy um where the trees are uh within a curved planter. There's also the opportunity when choosing species to um, you know, create a an iconic place. Um using a tree like the Jacaranda tree that turns purple in the spring is an opportunity to create a special event space when it blooms. Um you know, this could be used as in this example, along all of one street, like High Street, or could be located in corners. Planting trees is not just about what you see above grade. It is also important um to create the infrastructure below grade to ensure healthy, big, beautiful trees. Um so in in a situation like that, you need to protect the soil and use a system like Silva cells uh to create room for the tree roots. Also important is thinking about irrigation and a maintenance plan to ensure the longevity of the trees. Another thing that can be integrated in this with the street trees is lighting infrastructure for cafe lights and festival lighting. Here you see two examples of that. Uh the cities, city of Saris actually did this where each tree um within their street has an outlet and a light pole. So at certain times of year, they can string lights across the street. All right, the second key thing again is bringing people downtown and how uh here are a few ways that um we have to bring people downtown. The first one is potentially um using uh the U P R right away uh or another such site as one of the city parking lots uh for soccer courts, which would create a new destination downtown. Imagine twenty to thirty people every hour coming downtown to play soccer on the on these two footsaw courts. Um the area uh between the railway tracks and East Front, just north of First Street uh could fit two of these courts for small sided five-on-five games. And we talked to a company that um urban soccer parks that provide these. And um they're relatively, as far as things go, um uh uh affordable for uh such a, something that can create such a draw to downtown. Another thing that you can do to bring downtown um is to add a destination playground and splash pad, potentially as part of Lincoln Park. These are big draws for families and and that can, you know, really use the the restaurants and um other businesses downtown. This um here is one area that we looked at for a potential playground uh kind of in between the Veterans Plaza and Senior Center. And um you know, locating it here kind of creates a group of activity with the library, the playground that really creates a a draw and center of community services and a cultural hub right downtown. Another idea um that we looked at, uh we we didn't have a chance to put this together to present at the shred, but um we would like to suggest um working with U P on creating innovative ways to kind of beautify their properties downtown. This is one called a Miyawaki uh micro forest. My son's school just implemented one of these a few years back, and it was a really community event where the community and the school and the school came out to plant the area together. It's a relatively low maintenance and low cost um solution that really beautify, could beautify the city and really help to reduce that heat island island effect downtown. All right, the the third way of bringing people downtown is to create social spaces. You know, one of the things that we heard consistently during the shred is there are a lack of spaces for new restaurants. Existing buildings are very expensive to renovate uh and to provide the infrastructure for commercial kitchens and um you know, renovate for ADA. And so these next two concepts are really focused on how to create new space, social spaces and restaurants. They involve potentially um transforming two of the public parking lots along High Street um into um opportunities for new restaurant spaces. The first one is here, um and this is the existing condition of the of the surface parking lot. And here is what it could be. With a little bit of new landscaping and infrastructure, this parking lot could be transformed into a a beer and food garden. Uh shipping containers could be brought in to create uh the beverage area and restrooms. A space for a food truck can be located for either rotating food trucks or one consistent vendor. A stage can be str- constructed for live music, trees, shade structures, and misters could also be provided to create a cool place to come together and socialize. And here are some other examples and views of what that uh kind of space could look like. The second one is um a little bit more involved, but it's a way to kind of infill um the surface parking lots in the core of downtown and um create again new restaurant spaces, but also potentially uh spaces to live. So we did a little study of what could happen on this uh parking lot at the corner of First and High into um a mixed-use building. And here you kind of see three stories. It would create one or two new restaurant spaces and also bringing housing downtown. We found that, you know, this example here could add about twelve to sixteen units of housing and include about thirteen spaces of residential parking. And here's kind of another view of that. We could see it could be set off from the existing building and create, you know, a small pedestrian alley that could really be festive and used for outdoor dining. As I mentioned earlier, these projects do have trade-offs. The two surface lots have about fifty-one total parking spaces. And the street tree project will also remove some parking from downtown, about a dozen spaces. But changing the use of these parking lots, um you know, will really create an opportunity um for for new business, businesses and housing. So it's a discussion to have um going forward, but here are some concepts um of what could happen. Lastly, we talked about the potential for mobility improvements downtown, and there'll be a little bit more detail on this in the str- the the strategic plan uh when it's published. But the key here isn't include um enhancing intersections to downtown and potentially providing traffic calming and or roundabout at intersections where the grid change and really like connecting like Rose Avenue better with um bike trails and easier connections into downtown. So the strategic plan will really kind of, one, describe um that these projects uh generally and then also talk about priority projects and implementation action and an implementation action plan. So we're gonna uh document kind of these, these eight things, the the downtown street, streetscape, um how to add food and beverage opportunities, uh the facade improvements and enhanced maintenance, uh Second Street gateway element, uh some details and initial design concepts for the urban soccer fields, um some details about the opportunities for the Lincoln Park playscape, the micro forest project and the mixed-use building. I'm going to turn it back over to Amy to talk about how some of this stuff can be funded.
Thanks, Chris. Uh so implementation of the strategic vision in priority projects will require a combination of both existing and potential new sources of funding as well as time and support from city staff, members of the Business Improvement District and the broader community. Existing sources of funding can potentially include the city's general fund, the annual budget of the downtown bid, Business Improvement District, and the city's uh capital improvement plan, although these all require council decisions and ultimately actions. Um these funding sources can be used to fund a range of activities in support of the strategic plan, including ongoing maintenance and enhanced public services, uh providing the business incentives, um uh implementing economic development projects and funding streetscape, parks and open space and other infrastructure improvements. New sources of funding can include grants, uh taxes and assessments, uh the formation of a tax increment district and public-private partnerships, among others. These sources can be used to fund streetscape, parks and open space and other infrastructure improvements, affordable housing and housing rehabilitation, historic preservation, environmental cleanup, public art and other economic development projects. For each source uh mentioned, there are differing levels of funding capacity and obviously pros and cons to consider before moving forward um with a funding plan for any of these projects. Next slide. Um delving a little bit more into grant sources, um there are numerous federal, state and local Fresno County grants that are available that could be pursued to to fund any of these priority projects that Chris just mentioned. This slide shows just a few of the more relevant options. However, pursuing grant grants is highly competitive and requires significant staff time to conduct research and meticulously respond to grant applications. Winning competitive grants involves understanding the grant requirements and aligning projects um with the funding agency's priorities. In addition, uh successfully pursuing grants requires crafting a clear and concise proposal that articulates the problem or need with compelling supporting data, outlines a feasible plan with specific goals and includes a detailed budget. Uh finally, securing competitive grants often necessitates a local match, either in the form of a financial, a direct financial contribution or in-kind donation, um which can signify a shared investment in the project's success and can be crucial and convincing grantors of the project's viability and impact. So those are all items to consider when pursuing grants. I'll turn it back over to Chris.
Thank you, Amy. So just to conclude kind of the next steps in the strategic plan uh process, uh we are currently working on an administrative draft strategic plan, which we plan on providing to the city for review in July and August with a public draft strategic plan um scheduled for publication in September. And then a a potential uh presentation of that, that final strategic plan and final document in October. And that concludes the presentation and um you know, we're happy to answer any clarifying questions.
Thanks very much for your presentation. Does council have any questions for our presenters tonight?
No, I just want to um thank them for all of the hard work that they did on this. I know that um the vision is there and I'm really excited about what's what's going to happen. And one of the things that I'm highlighting here is that that we need the data to show the needs and that's how we're able to get all of these fundings. And that's something that they brought up at the work uh Parks Workshop as well, that if we can get a plan together and present it, then that's going to be um very beneficial for us so that we can get those fundings. So um I'm excited for this. Thank you.
Yeah, I think it's very important to have uh the parks here and we've got our, I was remiss in the last, the pro- Parks Proclamation, we do have the chair of our uh Parks and Community Services Committee here tonight, another member. Want to thank you for uh attending. I'm sure you're excited and getting a lot of ideas that you can bring back to your committee. And want to congratulate you on uh the Parks Month in July. And um just wanted to ask a clarifying question of our presenters um tonight. That strategic plan is in formulation right now. Will that be presented to council in workshop form or how do you present the the draft to that? Does that come to council or what's the, what it, what's the order of presentation for that?
Um I mean, it's a, it'll, it's a public document. Um I, and you know, it's really just a summary of our our recommendations. And you know, the recommendations will, in in some cases, uh have um more detail, like the streetscape plan has a little bit more detail than some of the other things. And you know, it kind of outlines next steps. I don't believe um it's a a thing that needs adoption or anything, but uh we will come and answer uh questions about it, I believe.
Thank you, Councilmember Kara.
Yeah, I just have a.
Oh, go ahead, council member. I was just going to follow up on that response if I, if I may. Um you know, ultimately, it it's up to us how that uh document is ultimately presented uh to the community and to the council. Um our preference is to um be able to make sure that the community knows what's uh included in that, in the recommendations that the consultant is making. Um often, a workshop or a study session is is a good vehicle for that. Um and you know, Chris mentioned that it doesn't have to be adopted. I think ultimately uh resolution, adopting the document does help, um especially if we are pursuing funding. You know, we can show that the city council is fully behind this document that, you know, and the recommendations within the document. So I think once we get closer to the development of the draft, uh we can probably decide on that and place it on an agenda.
I'd just like to make sure that we include our Parks and Community Services. There seems to be a lot of emphasis placed on parks here and increasing green space downtown um as well as our bid. So we're inclusive and we um include all of our citizen stakeholders in this as well, since this is a local plan for us, local people who live here and um and work here.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to just uh reiterate what you just spoke in regards to uh getting people involved. I think I think we, I think a workshop would be in order. I think if if we wanted to, and one of the real reasons is because a workshop where we, the council, understand that, you know, it is going to take policies, it is going to take uh tapping into our C I P, capital improvement projects for the future. And it's all going to, it's also going to include us having a vision for five or ten years so we can make sure that this process adheres to the future of our community. But also, the workshop would be good so we can actually have our community members come in and give us input along with the parks recreation. Um I think that would be something that would be ideal. I think it's a good plan. I think they did a good presentation. I also think that adding some of our ethnic cities, our Spanish uh culture to this program would actually hit, you know, home also, so. Um but I'm really happy. I want to commend you guys for the good presentation and I thank you guys for it.
Yeah, just quickly, I think you guys did a great job. I also attended some of the workshops. And I just want to go back to the page where the iconic High Street Jacaranda trees. Now, these are just examples, right? Are these just recommendations? Because I know when I attended the meeting, I think it's beautiful. I love it. But there is people there saying, you know, this is the Central Valley, our citizens, and they said a lot of people have allergies and trees like this would really hurt them, that they would never come downtown. So I'm just asking, is this just a recommendation? This isn't set in stone. This isn't set in stone. Is that correct?
Uh, no, no, it's, it's certainly not set in stone and it's, it's a kind of a, you know, an IG idea. Idea generating, uh, document and, um. The, the example of the Jacaranda tree is, you know, like one direction that you can, you could take it. Um, because, you know, it, it has that iconic, um, feel, but, you know, I think. At some point, a, an urban design and landscape architect and civil engineering firm will need to be. To be brought on and final decisions will need to be made on tree species, the design of the street and such. And that's when those things can really be considered. Um, our strategic plan document will outline a number of alternatives for this. The street trees like, you know, California Sycamore or a London Plain Tree. Um, and, you know, kind of, you know, there, there's many different ways. That this could go and different priorities to think about when you get into the, the more detailed design.
Okay. And I mean, I love the cafe festive lighting. That was beautiful, those trees. Um, the other thing is I was just wanting to know in regards to. Uh, where you mentioned about the soccer field, where exactly are you stating that this would be? Installed or?
So our, our, our suggestion would be to use, um. You know, to, one, um. If, if the city sets it as a priority to, um, you have now kind of initial design and to. Uh, start, um, you know, a negotiation with, um. Union Pacific Railroad to lease part of their, uh, property. Uh, for this, you know, hopefully extended, but, you know, in reality, potentially temporary use. Um, is our, that's our suggestion. We think it's a great location downtown. It'll actually help protect the city streets from the railroad, um. But, you know, one of these fields, uh, could also be located on one of the. The, the city parking lots if, if, um. That, that property does not work out and it's still a priority.
That, that was just another, um. That was mentioned regarding the train that goes through there, you know, I mean, it's really bad and it doesn't just go through there one time a day. And it goes down there several times a day. So just kind of mentioning that and then.
It's a, I, I would like to point out that this, um, this has worked in other instances. There's a place in Richmond, California that has three fields right next to their, um, their freight line. And, you know, it kind of creates a nice buffer from the businesses to, um, the, the tracks, but. It is, it is something to think about.
And then, um, the parking lot conversion, which is really great, but. You're taking up two parking stalls. Where are you gonna make up for the parking? Because. You know, we have a funeral home right behind our building and they take up a lot of parking when there's a funeral. So would, is there an idea where you're going to replace that parking?
I mean, uh, there's.
I'm just saying if that was.
No, I mean, I, I, it's a, it's a great question and it, it truly is kind of the question here. Um, you know, there are, there are limited, limited opportunities to provide. Um, new spaces downtown for, for new businesses, right? And, you know, it is a trade-off. You will lose, like if you converted both parking. Um, lots, you will lose about forty-three parking spaces. You can make up a few in the street where the current. Insurance and exits to these parking lots are, but it is a choice that the, the community and council will need to make. On prioritization. Um, you know, in general, our, our analysis is that the city. You know, has, uh, an ample amount of parking. And, um, but, you know, it's, it's a trade-off to discuss over, over whatever time period. On, on where, where the city council and community stands.
Well, I think you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Anybody in the community have any input on the plan? Come on up. Can you, um, turn on your microphone, ma'am?
Sorry. Sandy Nice Wander seventeen oh one Dinuba. I love the idea of more. Places that we can go to, uh, have meals downtown. I would love to see more retail downtown. High Street looks beautiful with what they're suggesting. But take out two parking lots, possibly three. Take out. How many stalls downtown? There's many people who do not have the ability. Due to health reasons to be able to walk distances. So if you have to, to walk any distance. Many of us, myself included, will not be going downtown. Even though there's more opportunities and I'd love to see a vital downtown. But by the same token, keep in mind, we need those parking spaces, beautify it in some other ways. There's got to be other ways to beautify while still generating restaurants and more retail for us. Thank you.
Santiago Zegar twenty-two oh nine Thompson. You know, great presentation. Everything looks good, but didn't we, um, just budget for some of the stuff that they're proposing? The speakers, lights, the trees, it's already in the budget. Also, I don't agree with taking away the spots because all those parking right there, guess who uses it? Unless you wanna kill the Selma Art Center. That's because that's what you're gonna do because we get a lot of people that come from out of town. Spend money in restaurants and whatnot and come support the kids without parking, you're gonna kill that program. I'm an advocate for the Selma Art Center. That we already budgeted all that money, I mean. And now we're, we're using a consultant to do it. It's like. I don't get it. Doing the consulting been done before we approved the. These items in the budget? I'm just saying. Cause I, I worked with Fresno County for a long time and, you know. Paying down backwards. You, you approved it. All you guys voted for it. You approved the budget and it's in the budget. Look at your budget. They approved the lights, they approved speakers, they approved trees, just a matter of getting it done. As far as, uh, soccer fields. People of Selma don't want little soccer fields. They want more green space. They want big soccer fields, big boy soccer fields. You know, there's thousands of kids that play soccer, you know, men, women, they all play. We need open space. What about the one, um, event that just happened in, in, uh, downtown Selma? Why don't we do more of those? You're not taking away the spaces, but for one day. You can do a lot of stuff right in front of the art center. You know, you can take yourself beer, whatever they do. It's perfect. Restaurants can come and set up, different trucks were there. It was a beautiful event. And all I'm saying is please don't take away the parking spaces, cause you're gonna hurt some of those things more than you will help it. It may, you know, it's kinda, people are gonna be happy, but I, I don't agree with taking away those parking spaces. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Shut you down. Harvey Singh from, uh, Selma, but on the other side of the track, seven four two five East Sanibel Avenue. Uh, I think this is a very, uh, uh, big, bold step for the city of Selma. You're gonna require a lot of deep pockets. Pull off some of the stuff, good presentation and certainly they're doing their, uh, their, uh, bid to, uh, impress the city. But a very ambitious program, a very, like I think Johnny said, a very five, 10 year down the low road is not immediate effect. It'll take some time and at the end of the day, I don't know if Selma. Will bring in that kind of attraction of that much, uh, foot traffic or will bring in that much. You know, we don't have the history that Kingsburg has and we don't have the smallness that Fowler has and we don't have Gilroy, we don't have Sirius. We don't have Morgan, not that we can't, we just don't have it. And when you, you take out, uh, parking lots. Like I think, uh, I think it's Sandy and it's smarter, uh, uh, she was saying that. Got that many new traffic, new, new people coming in and you're taking out parking lots, where are they supposed to go? Take a look at that Masonic Lodge. If somebody doesn't use that building, ask them who they are. Maybe put a food stall in there. That arts building that, uh, I think they mentioned Santiago did, that might be a multipurpose building. You've got an arts building. And you got it downtown, hardly see it used at, you know, even in the summertime, why not make that a multipurpose? Functional kind of concept, the same thing with that old lodge and then. Uh, maybe talk to some of the people at night, the B of A's of the, of, of days gone, the cornets of the days gone. If we could use a Nielsen's parking lot in the evening, they will allow, uh, you know, uh, city to use that, uh, if it's not. Exclusive parking lot. So good programs, good, uh, presentation, but I think personally, I've got a minute. Over the top and it's too heavy financially for the city. The biggest disadvantage the city has right now, I think when they were talking about the trash earlier. You've got a divided city. You've got two against three, three against two. If you have so much infighting, none of this is gonna materialize and none of it's gonna go anywhere. Good presentation, sounds very good to the heart. At the end of the day, we're back to square one. First fix your house. And then you can fix Selma. If you're divided, this town's gonna be divided, okay? So, thank you.
Anybody else with a comment?
But it's your Mary's twenty-two and eight Thompson Street. Good to see you. Hey, uh, we just had a, a big family, uh, funeral, a good plan, but we use both parking lots. Uh, if the funeral parlor is gonna be there for years. I have to look that, look that up because. Once again, we had a big funeral and we use both parking lots. Instead of spending money and trying to do this, we should spend money and trying to get the homeless. A place where they won't be out. Because we still serve them at the church. Maybe they can come out with some kind of idea to, to help Selma. Built something for the homeless, but it won't be out all in around and scaring people like they say. They can have a plan to help Selma. Once again, to build something to help them out. All the way around. We have the means right here, you know? Help us out.
Anybody else with a comment?
Ten fifty-seven Mill Street. So my question quickly is, um, four point five million dollar for the regional park. Um, four years ago that they three, two, one killed, um, for our soccer kids that we could have probably already been. Very close to being done with, with our developer Cliff Totellian. We had many meetings with the citizens, very excited. And of course that was killed, uh, by the three council members as, um, Harvey seems, it's always a three, two vote. And it doesn't betterment our, our city of Selma. Um, however, um. Supposedly in, in one of the meetings, they had stated that the state was gonna allow some of that four point. Five million dollar, four point four million dollar, uh, grant to be used. And supposedly there was a letter that, that was, um, supposedly sent maybe to you guys, council. That they were gonna be able to use it for that ten acre park. Um, not sure if you guys ever did receive a letter or not, if that ever even came through, would that be some of the money that they can use, number one? Uh, for some of these, um, uh, ways, because again, we're gonna be looking at measures again for the citizens to be taxed for. Um, for some of these parks. Another, uh, thing would be quickly, um, on the parking spaces, maybe. They can find some areas that is not very good area or places that are near the railroad tracks. That maybe the city can start allowing golf carts. Maybe, you know, there's. Uh, a lot of people that live in the city of Selma will be one of them, uh, to drive a gar, uh, golf cart and it relieves one of the. Parking areas, um, but that can be maybe something where we could, uh, start using golf carts. And, um, you're starting to see more citizens come to downtown Selma with the golf carts and which is a great, it's great for the environment as well. Great for gas, you know, we don't have to put so much gas to use and it frees up parking, but we do need to be creative. And start thinking of ways to, to make these things happen, um. For, uh, the betterment of our downtown. It should look beautiful with the lights. We should be getting lights now. Just like the Brewer Company did in Fresno. They didn't eat trees, they, they put poles until their trees were able to grow. Uh, we saw our Friday, uh, event was really nice. Citizens were happy, they want more of that. But what they do want is more light so they could come dance under the lights, cafe lights. There's plenty out there. There're not, there absolutely isn't any storage, um, there, there, you can buy them anywhere. So, um, maybe it's time to just start getting creative with, with our citizens here in Selma. And, um, find these way to ha, uh, make things happen. And, and I agree, I think we need to find something for the homeless as well, so they're not living in our parks. Um, and not just, you know, being out in the businesses and somewhere where they feel safe, uh, to be. Uh, we do wanna help our homeless, um.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. We have another speaker?
Seventeen oh one Dinuba, Jim Ablos. First, I, I wanna commend. People came to the, to do the presentation up here. I thank them. And identified some areas that, um, the city, uh, we need to improve on. As far as the downtown areas and other cities that they identified that, uh, improved their cities, not just. You know, uh, we had the trees, we had the lights and we took them out. You know, what happened there? You know, good question. Now these guys say we need lights and trees. You know, hey, you know, sometimes you tell ourselves where's our priority a little bit sometimes, but at the same time. We have to look at the overall picture in our city. You know, to, it's fine to develop a plan for the city, but also we must develop a plan. For the people to make a safe community. Safe community is very important to every community, not just city of Selma. Uh, and that deal, that involves the homeless issues on the street. I mean, you could have a beautiful city and homeless sleep in front of the business. Is that gonna attract people? No, zero. Is that gonna scare people away? Yes. Would you have it in front of your house? No. But they need help. They need help. They're out, that one time they were good people. Something happened in their lives and they still are good people. We just have to reach out and identify their problems, you know? And I'm the kind of guy that I don't shy away from the deal, you know? I try to. Find a way to solutions to help these people, you know? Um, that I sent a lot of people to, uh, you know, the people I come across, I send them to the churches that will help them. Um, that would need assistance. If there's a family in need, hey, Ablos will find a way. Uh, if they need a shower, uh, and, and an emergency, I, I send them to, uh, a person in our community. Um, and she's here right now, so, uh, I don't have to mention her name, she, everybody knows her, so. Yes, you know, yeah, but you know what it is, guys? We have to step back and really think. Where our priorities are at, okay? And how much money we're gonna have if we do this project, grants, whatever, that we have money in the bank. And not dip into our reserves. Reserves are important for reasons in our community. And sometimes you have to take a step back and evaluate. And these are gonna be, I'm, I'm telling you what I've seen before and the previous councils in the past, what I've gone through. All I can tell you right now, guys, you're gonna have to tighten your belts. It's coming. There's no doubt about it. Uh, state level, you know, county level. It's gonna be a, uh, a change, a game changer in our society and we have to be smart. And how we use our money and how we attract business.
Thanks for your comments. Anybody else with a comment at this time?
Teresa Sala seventeen oh one Dinuba Avenue. Um, I think the presentation was, was very informative. I did go to the workshop at the library and we were given the opportunity to give a lot of different ideas and a lot of it was implemented in the presentation tonight. You have to have change. I mean, well, first of all, the trees were taken out for a reason. They weren't just pulled out for no reason. So they do need to be replaced and the lighting was taken down because they were on the trees. So that's, that's something that's in the works as far as I, I understand with public works. They're trying to figure out a feasible way to put the lights back in. So it's not a, a negative thing that's going on in our community that everybody is against because everybody wants the lights and everybody wants the trees. As far as the parking goes, I agree with Sandy. You can't get rid of parking. You have to have someplace to put the people if you want them to come downtown. But there's other solutions, I think maybe vertical parking. I mean, put a parking structure on one of those corners and you could triple your parking that way. And then you'd still, that would leave more open space to put the trees, to put, convert maybe one of the parking lots into an outdoor facility for dining or entertainment or whatever. But it's not just, they're going to take away the parking spaces. Yes, that's not a good idea, but brainstorm, you know? Instead of putting a big old building with one restaurant and maybe apartments, maybe make it into a parking structure and then work with the other open areas in town that could add housing or something else. But I think there's lots of other solutions if people just would not be so negative. Just work together. We're, we're a council of five, not a council of three, not a council of two. There, you guys were all elected by the whole community to work together and to bring some positive change to our community. And I like coming to the council meetings and having everybody listen to each other and give their ideas and work together as a community. I, I love Selma. I've been here most of my life and I don't plan to go anywhere else. And I'd like to see the growth and the expansion of the parks, of the downtown, of having more restaurants and shopping opportunities. But it's going to take people working together and agreeing, not just arguing about which way is better. It's, I think if everybody works together, everything, everybody can have an opinion and you work together and make the whole community. Or you're going to fight, thanks.
Anybody else with a comment? Anybody online or, okay, go ahead ma'am.
Hello, Kathy Garcia nineteen forty-eight Wilson Street, Selma. I just want to thank everybody here and the presentation was wonderful. As far as the trash cans go, I just want to implement that my mom is also elderly and it's kind of hard for her to do.
Not our agenda item right now, thank you though.
And then I want to piggyback on Mr. Avalos about the homeless. I'm part of the Selma Community Outreach Ministries and just want to, just encourage you.
We're talking about the downtown, I mean, it does relate to the homeless, but if you could just link it into what we're talking about.
Yes, so I just, you know, the, the structures and everything that's going to go up, like I want to piggyback what he said. If there's a problem with the homeless and if we could work together while you're making the city more beautiful, when there's, you know, a spiritual aspect to the problem, we can, you can communicate with us more and, you know, refer them to us and then we can help with that area. I've seen a lot of miracles go on there and it does take, you know, it takes a city to help a person, you know? So if we all work together, you can deal with the physical aspect, we can deal with the spiritual aspect. And I think we would work great together, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any other comments? Anybody online or on the phone?
Hi there, Robert Cervantes. I think these are all great ideas that President here. I strongly believe in my opinion that the city is not ready, maybe five, 10 years from now. And we'll see how the population grows and everything. I think that, that those are good ideas to keep in mind when the city starts to expand and grow. But I think for net, for now, I don't think it's, it will work for the city of Selma. And one, another thing I want to mention, what are you guys going to do with the new law came down by the Supreme Court just a couple of days about the homeless? That now they were not able to be in the park, parking lot, playground, schools and all that, that you guys were now.
Not really topical.
What was that?
Can't really talk about that, we're talking about the.
No, okay, but.
I appreciate the question.
You guys are aware of that, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cervantes.
God bless you guys, Delphi Navascas. I just want to, you know, piggyback off of, it was an absolutely motivating, beautiful presentation. But we are having the problem of looking at that there's an increase of homelessness, which if they're having to stay in these beautiful locations, what's the point, right? So if you guys can look at this, I've already spoke to you guys in the past how the, we have at Selma Community Outreach been awarded a substantial grant to help with the homeless situation. And, you know, what you're presenting here, if we could come together, we can make me, make something happen and resolve, you know, many things. The main thing I think that we really need to look at is the, the humane thing. Which is, you know, those that are in need of housing more than, even more than greenery. Because the ones that need housing don't need the greenery, they need a place, right? So if we could come together on that and work together, we've had that first conversation, but we have not had any other follow-up. And as we're looking at this, and if we're going to make this happen, I believe that we really look at the human part of it first. Because even though they're homeless, they're still citizens of Selma. And, you know, you, you have before you a person that has been working with them since two thousand and fourteen and made a drastic impact. Why can't we bring this together and see how we can work at this at the same time? You know, I think it's really important and I know all of you have addressed it and even talked to me about it, some of you, about how you want to make those changes. And if we could just look at that before we look at this or somehow connect it, it would be a lot more important. Because as Robert mentioned, there is a law that's come in and it's going to affect the city. And you have somebody that's standing in front of you since day one, that has been frontline battling to keep the city cleaned up. And so we are here, our team is here. We'd like to come together with you and make that happen. Thank you, guys.
We have anybody online or on the phone before we wrap this up, bring this back to council? Only one time, Mr. Cervantes. We're, we're going to do it, we're just going through. City attorney notes, you can. Yeah, city attorney can take a break, press get anyone in the council whenever they need to. Okay, thank you, sir, thank you. City clerk, do we have anybody online or on the phone?
As a reminder to the callers online, please use your raise your hand feature and we will add you to the meeting queue. For those calling in, please press star nine to raise your virtual hand.
Okay, okay.
I see no hands raised, that's.
That will bring the matter back to council. Did you want to make a comment?
I did want to make a little comment, so I was trying to get up here, but there was a little, but it's okay. Okay, so I really liked, oh, sorry, my name is Jovita Camacho, Sal, California. I did really like the presentation. I also attended the workshops, I was there, I gave my input. I'm one of those that also participated in the survey. I gave, I actually asked everybody that, my friends on Facebook, I said, hey, I'm going to the workshop, give me your ideas. Everybody, I sent pictures, I'm like, you know, give them to me, we need to brainstorm. It's a great presentation, great presentation, great idea, people love it. I also participated in the downtown block party, great idea, guys, everybody loved it. So more positivity, more positivity is what we need. One of the setbacks is, is the parking. I, I did let them know, hey, you know what, we can't take away the parking, that's, that's a no bueno. I mean, I literally went into one of the businesses before the block party and they said, no, you know, we struggle with the parking already. So I don't think that that's too great of an idea, I mean, I'm all for it, if we get grants. Grants, 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 grants. I don't want to pay more in my taxes, I have multiple properties here, I already pay a lot of taxes on it. So to be a tax implemented on this because we want to put up some trees that we already took down and we want to put up lights, I don't want to do that. So I, I believe that if we get the grants, let's just say we go with the splash pad. Should we put it at Lincoln Park? We have to think the carnival comes in town every year, where are we going to put the carnival? Are we going to work around that? So we, I think these are all great ideas, but only if we get the grants and only if we can find splash pad because everybody wants a splash pad. If we can find a great place for it, then, you know, maybe people, you know, take a little mini steps instead of drastic change. Like everybody was saying, maybe we're not there and maybe we're not there maybe in five years. But if we may, maybe get a mini grant or a grant for the splash pad and then just snowball it from there, it'd be a great idea.
Ms. Camacho, did you list your address when you stepped up?
No, but nobody else did, so I just wanted to list it as Selma, California, but it's twenty-four, twenty-seven, sorry?
Do you mind, do you mind letting the speaker speak, sir?
Have a great one, sorry, I don't want to.
Okay, let the speaker speak, thank you. All right, anybody else would like to speak? That will bring the matter back to council. Any parting comments before we take a break?
I'll take a break.
Okay, with that, we'll take a five-minute break and come back, thank you. Okay, we're back in session and we're going to move on to our consent calendar. All items listed under the consent calendar category are considered routine. The complete consent calendar will be enacted by one motion by roll call vote. For purposes of discussion, any council member may have an item removed from the consent calendar and made part of the regular agenda. The council can then approve the remainder of the consent calendar. Does council have any items they would like or item they would like to remove from the consent calendar tonight?
I'd like to pull F, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve A through E.
I'd like to take off items C and D, please. Could you want to amend your motion, council member?
Yeah, just go ahead and make a motion to approve A, B, and did you say E?
E and E?
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please, for A, B and E.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, okay. Item C, consideration of a resolution approving amendment four with Fresno County Rural Transit Agency for contracted services. Just wanted, I went to COG this week and so we had a Fresno County Rural Transit Agency meeting and just wanted to kind of give a shout out for this. I think it's great that we're continuing this contract and that FCR TA is continuing this contract with our city, it's a good thing. When I was at the FCR TA meeting, the director there said, we're going to have. many four hundred and fifteen watt solar panels. This facility is gonna generate one point two megawatts of energy, more than it even needs. It's gonna be able to provide energy and sell it back, providing energy to our, um, energy strapped, um, city. Um, I think it's gonna be, um, uh, an incredible addition for, um, revenue. We get about a couple hundred thousand in our general fund from this every year. I think that's great. Um, and hopefully the grand opening will be occurring in the next, um, four months, but the director, um, did mention that people are coming from all over. So this is gonna attract a lot of people. This is the first of its kind with the kind of char- charging technology that they don't have in other areas of the state or even the country. For instance, this, um, this maintenance facility, and I urge you to go in the industrial park and take a look at it for yourselves. It's really coming along. It has inductive chargers for buses that that don't use hoses. Um, it's clean, um, clean energy. It's actual chargers that are themselves solar charged. So it's a really good step forward. And when we get to, um, agenda items, or I can even preview it now. I'd like to ask Director Stites to come in and do a presentation on the maintenance facility because it's really cool stuff. And I think it's in our backyard and would love to, uh, to invite him for a, for a future council meeting.
Are you making a motion?
Um, did anyone have any other input on this items to pull it off? Anybody from the public have any input on the FCR TA maintenance facility that's going up that hopefully will be open in a few months?
Yamal 1701 Dinuba. I'll be honest, you guys. It was, I have to commend the, um, the head of operations of the transportation. Uh, he could have picked any city, you know, Engberg, Fowler, but he chose Salma. And, and we should be, uh, blessed by this. How would I say? It's a gift horse in life in a city of Salma. Uh, you know, we're the first in rural area cities to actually develop a amazing operation of this magnitude. You know, um, energy wise, the future of, uh, technology. It's gonna be here in Salma. This is the first step, first stepping stone in, in our communities, not just this community, but for the future other communities down the road. So we should embrace this with, you know, generating revenue to the city of Salma we never had before. You know, I'm saying it's better to have it than nothing at all, you know, but, uh, but it'll create jobs and it'll create the people that come to our, our community that work in this community have jobs. They'll buy the food, the restaurants, gas, everything, and, and possibly live in our community, new housing development, you know? There's two good things. It's a positive, not a negative. It's a positive in a city of Salma. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have anybody online or on the phone who'd like to comment on this item?
In fifty-seven Mill Street, Rose Robertson. I'd also like to say, um, a big, huge thank you to Moses Stites. That guy is one of the amazing, amazing worker. A person in the entire Central Valley with an amazing reputation, who really cares about all the cities. He's gonna be bringing, um, as we saw some of these meetings, you see all these other mayors looking at him, ready to just say, hey, come to our town. But he worked here with Salma for, with this facility. This facility is gonna bring jobs to our city. Again, it's gonna bring, as you heard Jim Avolo State, it's gonna bring some nice revenue into our general fund, which we'll be needing desperately. Uh, this is positive for our town. This is very, very positive for our town. You know, when you see him at other meetings, I've been at other meetings at other cities with him and they just roll out that red carpet for him because they just have such respect for the man. He cares. I've watched him help our, a lot of our senior citizens here throughout the years. And I wanna say thank you because when those seniors call us for problems with transit, guess what? He gives them his personal phone sometimes and he takes care of the problem. So with that stated, I wanna say thank you to Moses Stites. What an amazing man. He's gonna be leaving a legacy for the entire Central Valley and probably more than that. This facility is gonna put Salma on the map. It's gonna be amazing. So again, thank you from the bottom of our hearts, Moses Stites. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Anybody else? With that, we'll bring the matter back to council. Um, is there a motion? I'll make the motion to approve this item. Is there a second? Call the roll, please.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Protimcho?
Yes.
Okay, the next item I asked to pull off tonight is the consideration of the resolution approving and authorizing the city manager execute an agreement with the city of Fowler to provide animal care services. Yes, Mayor, did you have a specific question? Okay, um, in terms of uh, this item, um, I have my thoughts on this, but do you have a brief summary you could give us? I think we have our director of, uh, animal services here. What's the timeframe on this? And I looked at the rates, the potential, the rate structure, which is a quarterly payout with, um, that's just projected at eighteen thousand divided by four, which is forty-five hundred per quarter. Is that correct? Mm-hmm. Um, but that's just a prospective number. And the actual number would be based on the services provided during the year. Is that, is that correct? Based on the fee schedule that was included in the agenda item?
No, my understanding is that that's, that's the actual billed amount.
So they'll be billed forty-five hundred dollars per quarter, no matter how ma- how many dogs they bring to Salma, no matter how, what kind of services are performed?
Yeah, the, the, the fixed amount is, is based on what we anticipate now, um, at this moment in time will be, um, you know, the services that we provide over the course of the year. Just like, um, you know, we structured the Kingsburg agreement to where we have the ability at the end of the fiscal year to assess what services, how many animals were actually, um, you know, taken in and adopted, et cetera. Um, we'd be able to revise that amount if necessary, um, with a future extension.
I have concerns about this, just like I did about, um, bringing in the Kingsburg animals as well because the new, um, city run shelter is really new. It's still new. Um, it's Ja- it just January is the city manager said there really are no historical numbers yet in terms of how many animals Salma will bring in. So I think we should, as a city, get a more of a handle on that before we go out to other cities and take on their, um, animal issues as well. Did council have an issue, uh, issue? Did council have any questions or issues before we bring it out to the public?
I have a couple of questions. I just wanted to confirm, do you know how many dogs you will receive from the city of Fowler on a monthly basis? I mean, I know we don't know that. But is there a cap? Like, hey, we can only take five dogs, you know?
Not necessarily a cap. Um, we do know based on past experience, um, you know, second chance animal shelter at, at one point served the city of Fowler. Um, and the number of animals that were taken in, um, were not even, um, up to what Kingsburg, um, you know, um, what we take in from Kingsburg and so, and which is reflecting the lower contract amount. Um, again, there's really no way to know, but we know, um, roughly the range. And, and we also, you know, Kingsburg is a little bit further than, than Fowler. I mean, roughly the same distance, but there's a different setup in terms of, of how they manage um, stray animals. Um, whether they pick up stray animals, there, I think they're a little bit less focused on picking up stray animals than, let's say, Kingsburg, for example. Um, and so I think there's an understanding that there will very likely be a lot less animals coming from Fowler than from Kingsburg.
The reason I ask is because there's still a concern for our own city. I mean, we get so, still so many calls, which I do, and I see it for myself. You know, we have dogs running around all over the place. And, and just in my neighborhood, I have a group of, of women that like to do their walks and they're afraid to do their walks now because they're saying there's still dogs roaming all over the place. And they try to call the number and nobody comes up and they said, don't bother calling PD because PD won't show up. I mean, this is just the negativity that we still have in our own city. And I just think that we really need to focus on taking care of our own backyard before we can really take on other cities. I mean, I get it. We took on Kingsburg and I'm not against. I love dogs. I love, I love them. But the fact that we see animals running all over the place is not a good, it's not a good sight, especially when some of them, like they're saying, are still getting dumped here. And we really need to take care of our own city before we can take on other cities. I mean, that's just how, my opinion, that's how I feel. Because, like I said, I get the calls and I get it all the time. I get citizens complaining.
Any other comments from council? Do we have any public comments at this time on this agenda item?
Evening, councilmembers. Um, Nidia Juarez, ninety-eight, twenty-nine, South Thompson. Um, I have a statement I'd like to make. Um, last Sunday, I was called out by a concerned citizen in Salma about two huskies running around her neighborhood. When I got there, she had fed them and watered these dogs. It was a hundred and four out that day. Um, they had been out for several hours. We got calls from several people saying, you know, we're trying to catch these dogs so they don't get run over. They were running in the street next to the dog park. Um, I went ahead and scanned both dogs. Thankfully, they were both chipped. We were able to look up their microchip and reunite them with their owners within the hour. But here's what really concerned me when I got this call. The caller said that she had called animal services more than three times and nobody picked up. This was on a Sunday. And it was around nine AM. Um, she called PD and she was told that there was nothing they could do to help her because they had no access to a key to the shelter, which to me doesn't make sense when PD and Salma Animal Services is supposed to be working together and PD's actually running the services. So how is it that your officers don't have access to a key for a facility that you're in charge of? To me, that's unacceptable. Second Chance Animal Shelter provided services seven days a week and was on call after hours for thirteen years. So why is it that when the city of Salma took over services, we can't get the same service? We're paying almost five, well, well over five hundred thousand dollars a year for salaries for a new shelter. And their, well, their excuse was, we're gonna provide better services to the city of Salma, yet I'm not seeing that. I wish it would have ended with the two huskies in the morning, but I got a call right around one PM for two white boxers that were found near the church. This lady found them, she watered them. They were overheating. When I got there, I scanned them. These dogs were not chipped. So I had to take them home. She couldn't hold them because she was leaving. So I took them home. What else was I supposed to do when we have no assistance from PD? And the shelter was closed that Sunday. So I took it upon myself, posted them on social media, gave them water, gave them baths, make sure they were okay because it was a hundred and four again and found their owners. I went ahead and microchipped both of them. So if they get lost moving forward, now they're microchipped and their owners can be reunited again if they get lost. So my question is, why is it that we're taking on contracts with other cities when we don't even have our house put together? And I'm with councilman, woman, Sarah Guerra. I love animals. That's the whole reason I'm up here. Because I didn't have to take those dogs home. You know, we could have easily left them out there and waited for Monday because that's what they told us. Wait for Monday and they'll get taken care of. Well, these dogs would have probably died out in this heat. So my concern is, why are we taking on contracts? And I guess half my question's answered because we need the money for the budget.
Thank you. Any other public comment at this time?
My name's Kelly Guerra. I live at two-one-four-five Cypress Street. I also got that same call because I've been doing, uh, rescuing for over thirteen years. I'm disabled now and it's hard for me to do, uh, much as what I used to do, but I do still scan dogs. But with that, I wasn't able to get to that, to that dog, to those dogs that day. And a lot of my family, we love to rescue and help dogs, but you know what? I've, I've been helping on and off at the Salma Shelter when it was second chance since it was out there in Kingsburg. And recently, the latest people that were hired, which I remember the first time after New Year's, the meeting I came to, Fernando, I asked you, the people that are there, are they gonna be the permanent employees? You stated no, which they still, which they are. And no one is Spanish speaking. I also called, uh, the Salma PD. I called the shelter. No one picked up for those dogs. Those dogs can, um, overheat and die instantly. Also, uh, the dispatcher had told me that, yes, they do not have access. Salma PD does not have access, the sergeant, to the Salma Shelter. How is that? What are we gonna do on the third and the fourth of July? Why am I and a lot of the people that worked at Second Chance having to still do the new people's jobs, which none of them answer the phones, they don't pick up any dogs and they, um, none of them are Spanish speaking. So how are they gonna help the Spanish speaking clients that have dogs running around? There's dogs running around everywhere now. That's ridiculous. When we have, you're paying them how much money? Bay Area money? That's, this just shows that you do not have any idea or clue of what it is to, what a shelter needs and intakes to help dogs all across the board. And I, I mean, it'd be nice if you looked at me, Fernando.
Because Eric, we do the.
Okay, but I'm talking to the councilmembers. I'm sorry, but I'm just saying. I'm speaking to you specifically because you make these decisions. I am just tired of this and I should not have to be doing their jobs, especially with what they're getting paid. They barely got a van and what were they doing? Getting transported in the back of a truck? How are you gonna pick up dogs left and right with the king cab of a truck, especially in this heat? These dogs, if they get in a car accident, they're gonna get thrown out of that truck. So from what I understand, we're renting the van right now. But like Sarah had mentioned, that we need to take care of the dogs in our town, but how can we do that with, we don't have the right people in place? Like I said, they were let go from Fresno Humane. I'm well-rounded, have lots of contacts statewide because how long I've been rescuing. And they were let go.
Let's.
Fired, basically, and yet you hired them.
Comments about personnel. Thank you. Next, please.
Santiago Sagata, twenty-two, nine Thompson. Um, you know, it's sad, but here we are again. You know, every meeting I come to, stuff always comes up. I mean, when are you guys gonna handle it? Really? You look on social media and there's always dogs running around. You know, I foster little, little puppies and my couches and stuff, they're all destroyed. But you know what? I'm not complaining. Because I love the animals. And my wife says, well, you know what? At least we saved their life. What a wonderful thing to think about, right? Being selfish and to think about anybody else but ourselves. I know they care. They care. But do you guys care? That's the question. I mean, supposedly we hire professionals, but yet you see it on social media. I called the shelter. They never showed. I called PD. They never, they don't wanna help. So who are they supposed to call? Are we supposed to give them the, the council people's numbers? So they can call them directly and say, you know, what's up? What is up? I mean, enough is enough. You know, you see dogs out there in a hundred and plus degree weather and you, you know, people call and, oh, you know, just give them water. You know, leave them where they're at. Hopefully they won't die. Really? Is that what we become? This is what Salma is? Let's make it better, guys. All of you. Not just you three. Everybody takes everybody, takes our community. We're in. Are you guys in? Are you guys in? There you have it. Three of you did not even shake your head. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're in Salma, some resident. So why are we, like, citizens had said, why are we going to take in more dogs when we can't even provide for our own here in Selma? Like I mentioned last time, one of the meetings, there was, one of my neighbor's dogs got loose. It was all over social media that people called the shelter. There was no answer. They left messages. Never got a call back. And this was during business hours between the hours of twelve to three, operating hours. And I believe it was Friday, Saturday. So why are we going to take another contract when we can't even provide for our own dogs? That's sad and it's embarrassing because you're providing huge amounts of money, thousands and thousands of dollars. For what? For what kind of service? It, it's BS. I'm sorry. I apologize. It's BS. I don't know what else to say, but I already know. I'm going to call it right now. Three to two. Thank you.
Ten fifty-seven Mill Street, half a million dollars of our taxpayer money again. With that service, Sundays is closed. What does that exactly mean? Sunday is closed at the shelter. Does that mean there's nobody working there, so dogs don't get fed? They don't get cleaned, they're in their feces? What exactly does that mean if Sunday is closed? Also, when Second Chance was around, they were lucky to receive nine thousand per month and that was for payroll. Everything else was raised. They always had events, something was going on to raise the money, then to use taxpayer money constantly. They made it sound as if Second Chance in the last couple of years received twenty-five to thirty thousand per month. If I understood correctly, they received maybe twenty-five thousand two months and I would question the third month as where all the checks bounce, where they truly use, love to use their checks bounce while, while when they didn't receive that last twenty-five thousand payment. Guess what? The checks aren't going to bounce, bounce. So if you guys just work that in to make it look good, like you always do, count on something and get ready to make Second Chance look bad on that check. But I would definitely question on that last check if it was ever given to Second Chance Animal Shelter. But overall, within the eight to nine years, nine thousand, maybe nine thousand was giving from taxpayer money.
What's your opinion about Fowler?
Fowler, well, it goes back to the Fowler contract. It, we did use Fowler for a period of time, but that's when they had so much rescues out there. But if you don't have a calling tree, we don't know what's going on on Sunday here and now you're going to go open up and do another contract with Kingsburg and Fowler and not even know, what, what is, what is our services on Sunday? What are we doing? Do you have a calling tree? Does a PD have a calling tree? We, we used to come out at midnight for the calling tree. We had a calling tree, somebody would go out and get a dog in dangerment for traffic collision. We had it down. What is the city doing with our half a million dollars? Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody on the phone or online? Anybody who wanted to comment online? Okay, just let them go, Mr. Avalos, and then you can.
Arvind Sandhu. Twenty-four seventy-seven Country Club Lane. So my question is, why are we, the city of Selma and the city of Selma Police Department, proposing to enter into contracts to provide services to other cities when it's not even adequately providing services to its own city, the city of Selma? We don't have seven-day operations. We don't have adequately provided services for animal control services like it has in the past. During non-operating hours, Selma PD is to ensure the public health and safety of all of its citizens and pick up any hazardous or injured animals. Recently, on June twenty-third, two huskies were roaming by the dog park and they were unattended and posed, possibly posing a threat, but they were also overheated. As concerned citizen called PD and asked if, you know, they could come out and assist and they were told that they didn't have a key to the facility, so they couldn't do anything. So they reached out to Second Chance Rescue and we came out, scanned the dogs and got them home. But that also, that is something that, you know, Selma Animal Services is supposed to take care of along with Selma PD. But yet, we're still having to go out there and help because the people in charge don't want to do what they want to do. And, you know, and also it's getting really, really hot. We need to make sure that there is seven days animal control services out there. And cars, dogs are going to be left in their cars. What are they supposed to do? Is the police department supposed to be responding to all of these calls? I mean, we're fully staffed now, right? So is that, is that what's happening? We need to make sure that there is somebody at the shelter during, you know, normal business hours to make sure that calls are being answered and that, you know, there's somebody to respond and that PD is informed. Clearly, they're not informed because they don't know where the keys are at. As far as the proposed contract for the city of Fowler, why was this not brought forth when the city of Kingsburg contract was brought forth on May fifth or sixth, I'm sorry? Why was this not a part of the budget? Why are we, you know, it's July first, first day of the fiscal year. Why are we bringing a new contract? This should have been on the radar of the city manager and the department head, the police chief. They should have known that, hey, we're going to enter into this contract. This should be, already be in the budget. Why are we wasting taxpayer money and time to bring this back over and over again? This is not a good business practice, is not good budgeting practice. Because these are revenues and expenses that are going to be incurred. Costs for service need to be answered. And we don't even have a fee structure. We're charging city of Kingsburg and Fowler and telling them what, what, what our costs are, but yet we're not even accepting owner surrenders. We're not even charging people for reclaiming their pets, adoption fees, microchipping, none of that. So we're not getting any revenue, but yet we're giving out services for free to everybody else. But we're not giving out the full extent of services. So we should not be entering into contracts when we can't even fulfill the duties to our city.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else on the phone or online? Okay, Mr. Avalos.
Jim Avalos, seventeen oh-one Dinuva. You know, I'll be honest with you guys. I'm a animal lover. I have animals, you know. You know, I, I have one from the shelter, you know. And I try to train him, go get my newspaper, my shoes. He didn't do neither of that. You know, I think he trained me more to feed him and take care of him. But in life, you know, and this animal shelter is, you know, I guess there's some issues as far as the services. Maybe we should develop our rotation schedule for the animal shelter on weekends. That way, people, when they make these calls, maybe we could pick up these animals or situations that have come about. Because, you know, I understand law enforcement has their hands full in certain situations. I mean, they're going to prioritize the situation. Go get a dog or go get an assailant, you know, or someone broke into their house or, or situations like that. I understand that. But at the same time, there's another question I'm going to ask is, okay, if we get these dogs from these different cities, how long do we hold them? If they don't get adopted, what happens to these dogs? Do they get mutinized or what is taking place? Is there a program laid out? I mean, on, on this program here is what, with the city is the same as before? I'm not sure. You have to give me, enlighten me a little bit. I'm asking that question. I don't know who's, who can answer that question, right? But, and I want to know how many dogs have been killed from this, since they took it over till now? If any dogs have been killed? I don't care what city they're from, Kingsburg or what, or drop off. I, I like to know myself. Because I'm not a, I'm not a fan of killing dogs, let's put it that way. They, they, they attach to you. Anybody who has a dog lover here, they get it. They become part of the family. And, and I, I'm not a fan of killing animals unless, unless it's necessary. Totally necessary. And I just want a clarification how this is taking place and how these calls are not being addressed. And no one's on the weekends addressing these. Maybe a rotating schedule will help out on the weekends and, you know, come and lead some of these pressures. You know, as far as contract to other cities, let's evaluate a little bit better, but if you want, if we need, city needs money, well, okay. Let's charge them a little more if that's the case, you know? Because they don't have animal shelters. They're willing to pay the price, you know? I, I would adjust that a little bit and, and cost, but that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we get a report from the Selma Animal Shelter on a monthly basis. I believe we had one at the last, at the last meeting with some of that information on there. Anybody else with a comment at this time?
Robert Cervantes, I think there's a mixed messages in here on the audience. I think if everybody would volunteer help on the weekends, I think we'll be a better community and we can serve the pets much better. So everybody who's saying that we need to do this, let's all volunteer a weekend. You know, a group can put together for the weekend and says, we have two, three persons that are going to volunteer this weekend and then have another group for the next weekend. And I think that will help. That will solve a lot of these issues. So I think it's something that you need to think about, that talk about this thing instead of pointing fingers at everybody. So I think we can solve this problem. We got bigger issues than this problem right here, so then we should focus on the bigger picture than something like this. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Oliver Maris, Selma, California. I disagree. I'm not going to volunteer and I don't think anyone else here is. You're paying over half a million dollars? No way. There is a problem with dogs. They're all over the place. And we, it's an issue. My question to you is, what are you doing about it? Going out to the shelter, you talking to them? What's your plan? That's what I want to know. Because it's the same thing like Santiago said, over and over and over. And there is no answers. There's no results. There's no anything. So like I said, my question to you is, what are you going to do about it? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments before we bring it back to council? That will bring the matter back to council. Does any council have any comments before we call for a motion? I'd just like to, I'm just expand just a, just a little bit on my previous comments, just listening to the citizen comments. I hear what you're saying and I agree with many of them. I believe that there are, this new shelter operation is, it's, it hasn't been around long enough to extend its services to other cities. It should, the Selma Animal Shelter should figure out what it's doing and, and get experience in its operations for its, especially in its first twelve months. So there's that historical data that the city manager referenced earlier that, that is developing and is, and is about six months in. I also listened to the, the response here and it really sounds like it would be a better idea for the city to take these resources that it might be using on animals from Fowler. And God bless them, by the way. Wish them all the best. But we're in Selma and we're spending Selma taxpayer money of five hundred and twenty thousand dollars a year on the Selma Animal Shelter. And so why don't we open our shelter on Sundays? Why don't we have it open so that our citizens can call the shelter seven days a week? Because just because it's closed, the animals, you know, don't decide not to get out of their yards or be spooked by fireworks. And it is, it's, this is going to be a tough week with fireworks that scare the dogs and it's going to be really hot. And this has always been a tough year traditionally for, for animal shelters. So I wish our Selma Animal Shelter well and I wish Fowler well and Kingsburg well. But I must respectfully disagree with this agenda item to extend Selma's limited animal services to provide animal care for Fowler. And if there are no other, if there are no other comments, I'll entertain a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro? Yes. Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Guerra?
No.
Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No. Item F, Councilmember Guerra?
Check register. I have a couple of checks. I just wanted a question on page eighty, excuse me, sixty-nine. Check number's cut off. I can't tell what it is, but second one down, JR Investment Properties. Financial refund, several years wrong billing for nine thousand eight hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. What is, what was that for?
I can answer that, Councilmember Guerra. There was a property that we were made aware of that apparently used to have homes on the parcels. And years ago, the properties were demolished. Our ordinance requires any, any parcel that has residences or structure built on it to be provided with trash service. Apparently, we or nor the county were notified that those structures were removed, were removed, so they were being charged for trash. And then the property owner finally made us aware of it. And so we went back several years to refund the charges that were incorrectly charged. In addition to that, I think there were also some code enforcement assessment liens on that property with regard to the lack of service. So in addition to trash service, I believe there were also some fines assessed that were reversed as part of that.
Okay, and then down, same page. Check number six four five three two, Terror West Construction, PW CIP Highland and Rose Development Project in the amount of two hundred and eighteen thousand and thirty-four and thirty-one cents. Now, was that Caltrans project? Whose project was it?
This project is a result of the development agreement with Highland and Rose Development Project that was approved by city council in October twenty twenty. This project, the city awarded as part of frontage improvements at Highland and Rose as part of the development agreement with the property owner. The progress payment on, on those improvements.
Okay, so was this the project that was just completed, I say, a few months ago that they worked on Highland?
It was at Highland and Rose, south of the interchange, closer, it's a north of a vacant lot in front of the Hyundai dealership over there. But it was a, it was a city project within Caltrans right away.
Okay. That's it for me.
Anybody else? Anybody in the public like to bring up any items on the check register at this time? That we will?
Check eight four five one seven for Sagasir Watkins and Woodland PC for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Is that an attorney and that, and that came out of the general fund, correct? Is that an attorney or what is that, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars coming out of our general fund?
City attorney?
That was a settlement payment for a settlement agreement that the city approved.
And who was the settlement agreement with?
The settlement, this was the settlement agreement between the city and Fernando Santillana.
Oh, that was the three-two vote. Okay, just clarifying. Thank you.
Any other items on the check register anybody would like to bring up?
Yes, I would like to make a comment on that.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Robert Cervantes.
Identify yourself, please. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, didn't you start this lawsuit yourself first and right out of the cage? So I think that you need to do some explaining yourself, sir. You, you send your wife out here and do the bidding for you. It's a shame that you don't
Sir, we're talking about the check register right now, so you can sit down.
About, you're not going to tell me to sit down. And I tell you, so you started this lawsuit. A lot of these people
A lot of these people and reds.
Yell all you want, sir.
Are.
Yell all you want, but this is.
So disappointed with you. Big, you started this problem. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, any other items on the check register tonight? Do we have anybody online or on the phone who would like to bring up any items on the check register at this time?
Mayor Robertson, I see no hands raised.
Okay, with that, um, I, I will make a motion to. I will make a motion to turn down the check register. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
I said I seconded, sir.
To turn down the check register?
Turn it down.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Excuse me.
Excuse me.
I make a motion to approve it.
No, you said to turn it down.
I said, I made a motion to, to turn down the check, to not accept the check register.
I was making a motion to approve the check register.
So you're amending your motion, sir?
Well, first of all, I wanna make a clarification of what occurred earlier. And we had your mayor's wife come and explain about a settlement agreement with disrespecting our city staff and I'm asking right now.
This is about the check register, sir.
I'm, I'm.
Did you both second my motion to turn down the check register or not? That's the topic at hand.
I'm, I'm.
You've got your comments at the end of the meeting.
I have, I have.
However, much.
Finish my, my clarification and I wanna make sure.
Have a vote, we have a first.
I wanna make sure, I wanna make sure that we keep it respectful at the end of the day right now. I've been very quiet, I've been very quiet and all I'm asking for is for everybody to be professional and stop being like cheerleaders. For the mayor, I understand it's a political time, I understand it's a political time, but right now, I wanna make a motion to approve.
With the comments from the public.
I wanna make a motion to approve the check register. Clarification.
Okay.
Is there a second?
We already had a motion, we had a motion to turn down the check register.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there a second to turn down the check register?
And I seconded.
Okay, go.
And Councilmember Garrett, so call the roll, please.
Okay, I'll take it in the order that it first started for clarification. There was a motion, uh, to reject the check register and that motion was made. With the first by Mayor Robertson.
Correct.
There's a second on the, on the floor to reject that check register and the second one's made by Councilmember Gara.
Correct.
Thank you. Councilmember Gara?
Yes.
And that's a yes to reject the check register.
That's correct.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
Well, I made the.
A motion to reject the check register, correct?
Correct.
So you made the motion.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
No.
Mayor Protem Cho?
No.
Councilmember Trujillo?
No.
There's a second motion on the floor, if that's what I'm understanding. And that motion was made by Councilmember Trujillo and that is to accept the check register.
Can I second that?
Call the roll, please.
Thank you. Councilmember Trujillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendez Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
No.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No.
So, I wanna, I wanna, I wanna say.
On to our regular agenda.
Really quick, cuz I have some audience making gestures at me and I really love to keep this professional.
Um, this is a.
I wanna make it professional.
Sir.
Can we keep it professional, please?
Public here has a right to participate, let's keep it professional.
No, we have, we also.
Everybody in the audience and everybody up here.
I need to make.
Can you, can you please not interrupt?
I wanna make something clear, just, just to be clear, the audience does have a right to speak, but the audience does not write, have a right to act outside of the decorum. The council is set by their handbook and that includes making gestures, cursing. And talking out of turn outside of when the public comment is called for.
Which didn't happen, City Attorney.
I also.
And what about the city council member who will not take his turn? And let us move on with a properly sequenced meeting. Those are Robert's rules of order. Let us move on to our regular business and we're gonna have council comments after that. We're having a publicly noticed meeting here, let's not interrupt it.
I think it's appropriate to call for decorum cuz there was not decorum there for solid two minutes.
Just did, City Attorney, we just called for decorum, we hope everyone will abide by rules of decorum in the council as well as on the dais. So thank you. With that, we'll move on to our first item of regular business. Which we decided earlier to make number five, number one, which is consideration of a resolution. Amending the schedule of fees and charges for refuse collection rates. Report, please.
Yes, so this item is coming before you tonight because. As we've stated, uh, at previous meetings, the cost for, uh, the residential and commercial service. For the residents and the businesses in Selma under Mid Valley will not be increasing. Um, but when we went through the, the rate sheet from Mid Valley, there were certain things that they charged. Not necessarily more on, but just differently and we couldn't compare them side by side with waste management. So we just had to do a little cleanup with the, a, a few of those fees. And again, they're not, uh, regular service fees, they're special, short-term optional fees that, um. Residents or businesses might use such as portable restrooms, um, or roll-offs, things of that nature. And again, they're not necessarily increasing, they're just, um. A fee that was maybe charged differently by waste management or just, uh, ha, they have a different setup, so. Those fees have been included, um, with the resolution as an exhibit and I'm available for any questions.
Council, have any questions for City Attorney Crouch at this time?
Yes, City Attorney, I just have a couple of questions. I just wanna get some clarification here in regards to, you said you couldn't compare anything, um. Of these items with the waste management, but Waste Management was here 10 years. And I know that they had a fee for their 30-year bin or their 20-yard bin and their roll-off fees. Um, they also had charges for their portable restrooms, so here it all says none and there's no. There should have been some comparisons.
They do not have, um, they do not charge their portable restrooms the same way that Mid Valley does. So there, there's another portable restroom fee on here, that's not on here, that Mid Valley charges that is less than Waste Management. But there are other ones that, that they don't, um, I can't really speak to the 20-yard bin, uh, Fernando might be able to, but. I didn't get into like necessarily the technical aspects, but I know that they put them side by side and they did not have these fees.
Yeah, and I think what the point of this is to get it on our, because previously the charges that were special charges not necessarily applicable to. Every resident, um, more as on-demand services like the portable toilets. Um, folks who needed that service were referred directly to Waste Management. And they were being billed by Waste Management. In order for us to be able to charge fees as a city, um. Whether it's our contractor or not, or whether it's billed directly from the city, it has to be on our schedule of fees. And so what this table reflects is that there's currently no adopted fee in our fee schedule that reflects these charges for these special services. Um, and so I think that's just, um, you know, the point that the city attorney is trying to make. We don't currently have fees in our schedule for any of these items and so they're being implemented. Again, if any of these, um, services were being required of residents by, um, for Waste Management to provide. They were being directed directly toward, to them and then Waste Management would, um, bill them, they're, in their own way.
I think I, uh, I participated in 2019 in an event and we, uh. We actually, uh, rented, uh, about eighteen, that was when we brought Ramona Ala. And I think we spent about, but we were directed from the city to actually Waste Management and they actually told us they had a fee structure individually for that. So I understand and I concur what you guys are talking about. I never, I didn't know that it was actually. A process of what they were, how they were doing it and I can understand how you wanna implement it so we can know that the city. If we, once we approve this, we understand that the city already has a factual, uh, uh, a cost of what anybody's in it, just go to the city, they know it's the price, correct?
And it's the legal way to do it as well, um, as we're required to, um, propose these fees in a certain way, show that they're. Uh, for the cost of service as well as provide notice to the residents and allow for a public hearing.
Good question on that, so we have the fee structure, but we would still be, or the city would still be referring them to Mid Valley. In order to rent these items if we're having an event that we need to, or if we're just doing some construction work or whatever in our property. And we need a, a, a 30-yard bin or what have you, you still, the city's still gonna be referring them to Mid Valley. Because in that way they'll pay them directly, but you'll know exactly how much you're paying.
Correct, yeah, and this prevents, uh, the waste hauler from raising rates unexpectedly for these special types of service. If, if they wanted to raise the rates, they would speak to us and we would present it to the council for approval.
Okay, this is a public hearing item, so hearing, um, no more clarification questions from council at this time. We will open the public hearing to the public for input. Does anyone have any questions or any items they would like to say? Um, about this public hearing item? Come forward, sir.
Stay in the front row. Jim Avalo, 1701. Okay. There's a major issue here, guys. Um, and the gentleman that came from Mid Valley, he made a statement publicly. Here, he says nothing's changed, all the service will be the same. All of a sudden, okay, we got changes now all of a sudden. Church, you know, surcharge fees and, uh, rate changes. Okay, now all of a sudden you just changed the contract that man just said earlier in Mid Valley. He's making some statements that are, and now became no longer true. Uh, when things like that and as council up there. Looking at these contracts and making these statements to you. Trying and hoping this is okay, we're gonna believe your word and all of a sudden you check, you go back on your word. That tells me that contract before you becomes voided, cuz now you're changing the language. Now you're changing, you're actually changing the language and I think that attorney up there understands that totally. Uh, you know, I understand contracts, I get it. So, you know, to the, to the public, it's not fair what is about to take place to them. Uh, I have, tomorrow I have a meeting with some individuals that they explain about this Mid Valley, uh, adjustment cost. You know, uh, uh, how do I tell them that the group, when they came up for the council here that nothing has changed? And all of a sudden it just changed dramatically, uh, on cost. And that's not fair to them and that's not fair to you guys to, uh, to agree to these terms. Because now this contract is changed totally, totally. This, this contract is now become voided out, something has to be. I'm just telling you guys straight up, you think about what I said legally and logically. Thank you.
I just wanna clarify for a second, the, these are, none of these rates are different from the rates that were proposed on Mid Valley's entire rate sheet. Which is attached to their contract and was attached to their request for proposal. All of these rates that, all of these fees that are included in this resolution tonight were on that rate sheet. So they have not changed anything, um, this is just us following the legal process that we have to, to adopt these fees.
Do we have any other input from the public at this time?
Rose Robertson, so I have the Mid, Mid Valley disposal proposed rate scheduled for the city of Selma. On the left-hand corner, it has Mid Valley disposal rate proposal 63023. On there it has short-term special three-yard bin, limit trash bin, um, roll-off, uh, delivery 20-yard bin trash 235. 0.13, 0.8 on the, um, oh, actually, let me go back, 0.13 and city admit. 0.08 on education fee, uh, let's see, and it, it ends up, let's just use the 20-yard, uh. Yard bin trash, um, at the end it has. 8357. And the one that is in the city manager's staff report for city council for today's meeting, July 30th. The 20-yard bin, um, has, um, proposed fee, uh, $261.11. So I'm just really confused with this, I don't know, um, why this is so confusing, but, um, hopefully. Not sure if they're able to explain that today, but when Mid Valley comes to the next council meeting, hopefully we'll be able to say where, which one was in the contract. Which you guys voted for in, um, September. Did you guys actually have all this in front of you before you quickly made the decision to make the motions? Thank you.
Any other comments at this time from the public? Do we have anybody online or on the phone?
Welcome. Louis Franco, Selma, California. Uh, just a question. I understand the concept, you're gonna put the user fees in there. Does that guarantee that rate for the term of the contract or the yearly user fees? So you say they are lower than Waste Management, so that, will they be frozen for a period of time? At lower cost?
There is a rate lock for two years, correct? Yeah, so, um, that, that's the only.
And if they're not in that, if this is not adopted, then any service provider. In the past or present can just charge what they say, hey, this is the going price and we can charge it and there's no. No legal re, recourse on the city's part?
So if the, if the city doesn't approve of the fees that, that were agreed to as part of the contract. I mean, that could become a legal issue, but ultimately it could be a situation where the city would be, um, responsible for the, for the gap.
Okay.
If there, if there wa, if there was any, I mean, here there wouldn't technically even be a gap cuz their, their fees are lower than Waste Management.
This is basically just house, housekeeping for invoicing purposes, for lack of a better word.
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, and I, I don't think we could legally charge the fees if they weren't in the fee schedule.
That is correct.
Okay, any other comments from the public at this time?
Parveen Sandhu, 2477 Country Club Lane. Um, if the rates were in the proposal. Then why didn't they make it into the contract that was approved in December? Um, obviously, we didn't see those rates because they weren't included in the contract at that time. Um, you know, I feel like this is redundant, we keep coming back to, to do something else, this all should have been taken care of seven months ago. We're wasting time and money again. And also the effective date of this contract is October 10, 2024. Um, and that's, that date is listed twice, why are we starting services on July 1st? Um, if the effective date of the contract is not till October 10. We, you know, these things should be reviewed before they're actually put into contract. Um, and also, it's July 1st, today's the first day they took over and we're already doing a rate amendment, is this gonna be? Um, something that we had looked forward to is, you know, rates being changed all the time? Um, these are questions that we have as citizens, we, and we don't know what we're being charged. We never saw them, we never saw the proposals and we never saw the rate sheet because it was never publicized. So we would like that publicized. Thank you.
Ella Ramirez, South, California. Um, I have a question. The, um, Dinuba over at the Village, uh, Homes, do they get their trash cans? Um, do they have to buy their own trash cans or are they given trash cans?
You have to buy them.
Okay, that's what I learned, um, and I wanted to know that, um. If, there's a lot of senior citizens that cannot afford them because, you know, they're on a budget, they're getting, you know, social security and it's, money's really tight. So I did have one, I have a friend there that she wanted me to convey this message. And that was, she said, I wish someone would tell council that the senior citizens are being abused by the decisions of the cities of Selma. Because that's, that's how they feel, because they cannot afford to buy trash cans, because it's, it was not fit into this budget with Mid Valley. Well, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, it's kind of related to the rate change tonight, thank you. Did anyone else have any input on this public hearing item before we refer the matter back to council? Okay, with that, we will close the public hearing, refer the matter back to council. Does council have any comments at this time before we take a vote? Um, I just had a couple, I, I would echo as usual, the great comments from the, the, most of the people. I thought they were incisive and one of the big things that I'm hearing is, you know, we, this vote was like nine months, 10 months ago. And I think everybody wondered why. And I think everybody wondered why, why so early? And, and then we hoped that that's because we wanted to hammer out all the problems potentially before that time. And here we are, July first. And we don't have our cans. At our, at our business, we don't really know where we're putting the trash. That's why we wanted to have that item tonight, but we'll have it at the next, at the next city council meeting. But here we are with another rate change and I'm looking at the proposed fee and the. Tonight and then the fee on the proposal that we were given and, and they are slightly different. I mean, they are, there's a difference there. The roll off delivery fee, the eighty three thirty three is different from the eighty three fifty seven. So they're not, they're not hugely different, but they are different and that's just a little troubling. Like someone said, we need to be doing our fact checking, you know, and the contract has a different couple of dates on it. And then finally, just to echo again what we heard tonight. Why didn't we have those rates with the contract that we, that we voted on? I just, it wasn't transparent and I really felt like this, the decision to go with Mid Valley. Was a foregone conclusion before a citizen committee, before we did the vote, before anything happened. And it was the three who decided to award the contract to Mid Valley ahead of time. And now we are cleaning up after this and I, I don't know why. I think we could have done this earlier and we could have hammered this out. And now we're, we're coming up with issues like this and these, these change in amendments. And, and I am concerned too that we're gonna have more and more and more of these. And people are very, very concerned about their trash pickup. It's a big part of everyone's life in the city. And my final question before I ask for any other comments. What were Caglia's rates on the roll off delivery fee, the twenty yard bin? These were special rates. I'm just trying to look through my paperwork. Where would I find Caglia's rates? Would I, on these?
No, we wouldn't. We wouldn't put Caglia's fees on here because we didn't select them as their, as our waste hauler. We're in contract with Mid Valley.
But we looked at their, their numbers. So where were their numbers reflected in their bid?
Their numbers were attached to their request for proposal.
Okay, so their rates, I can find these.
You can, well, not, we didn't, in the request for proposal, we didn't require them to propose any certain rates. We said any rates or fees you plan on charging, propose them. So they might not look side by side, they might not match up side by side. Actually, I can tell you for sure they don't match up side by side with Mid Valley. There are certain things that they charge for that Mid Valley doesn't, vice versa. So, but I mean, I, that's, it's a public record.
So I could find them, so I could request them or anybody could DRA them? The Caglia's rates for, for this, for these general types of fee types?
Yeah, we would just, we would just, well, I don't know that you could line them up because they might not, they might have different, they might charge their fees differently. That's the whole reason why we weren't able to line them up with waste management either.
And the last question, did, Selma disposal, were those rates approved? Their fees for the roll off, because these are pretty common special type fees. Were their rates approved with, when it was Selma disposal before it became waste management? Do you know? Does anybody know?
It's before my time.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any more comments before we call for a motion?
Yes, I do. So I'm not sure what the, what you, what some of my colleagues here are looking at. Or what the public is looking at, but I'm looking at the rate sheet that Jerome sent out. And it says short term specials. And it has the amounts here for roll off delivery. On here it says eighty three thirty three and it says eighty three thirty three here. No, and twenty yard bin, it's on here for two sixty one eleven, two sixty one eleven. Thirty yard bin. Two ninety four forty four, two ninety four forty four and so on. They're on here. So I don't know what the public is looking at or what my colleagues are looking at up here. But it, I don't know if you're looking at the same email that I'm looking at, but they're on here.
What we got.
They're all different.
They're all different.
Did you get Caglia's rates by the way, before you made your motion for Mid Valley?
Yes, I looked at everything.
Did you look at Caglia's rates for these? Because I know I didn't see them.
Go back to that because I did look at my packet and so I made my decision, the way I made my decision and that's what I did.
Any other comments before we call for a vote? Is there a vote on this item? A motion?
Make a motion to approve?
You're a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll please.
Councilmember Menjozen Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Gera?
No.
Councilmember Trillo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No. Okay, with that, we will move on to our. Okay, we could take a five minute break. We'll come back at nine ten.
Right, okay, go ahead.
Get started again with our item number one, two. This is consideration of a resolution revising the downtown storefront improvement grant in the downtown business improvement district. We have a report tonight? Sorry about that.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. Today I'm presenting on the revised eligibility criteria for the storefront improvement grant that was approved by a resolution on April first of 2024. So originally, the program guidelines included included a provision stating that any bid board member with any stake in the project, such as being a business owner, a property owner, or having any vested vested conflict in the any vested conflict of interest must recuse himself from voting and scoring that application. To promote transparency and ensure that there are no conflict of interest or perceived conflicts of interest, it was requested by council that additional clarifying language be added to just help delineate any eligibility, the eligibility of applicants and eliminate any potential perceived conflicts of interest. So the revised guidelines as proposed now state that current members of the city council and the bid advisory board are not eligible for funding under the program. The change just ensures that everyone who has a role in oversight and decision-making process are not also beneficiaries of the storefront improvement grant dollars. The envision, the revisions are aimed at excluding or ensuring fairness by excluding city council and bid advisory board members from applying, promoting transparency, and avoiding conflicts of interest. The action does not have any impact to the general fund as those dollars have already been allocated through the budgetary process. And just for clarification, I wanted to point out that the stipulation does not include property managers as there was no specific direction provided by council. However, it's also within your scope to discuss, so as you see fit.
Thank you. Thanks for your report and bring the matter back to council. Are there any comments at this time on this agenda item?
Yeah, Alicia, I have a couple of questions. I just, just to get some clarification, I mean, this is common sense, you know, or should be anyway. But let's just say, for example, you're saying council members or the bid commissioners that are on the actual bid. But what if a person, you know, I'm just going to use myself, my business, my, my building, well, my husband's not a council member and he's not on the bid. So do you have to have clarification? He's not a council member, he's not on the bid. Is he going to be able to apply for this grant? Or should you have to get, you know, specify the language? Because there could be, you know, I'm just going to use my neighbor, his building, you know, I'm sure it's in his, his wife and him, there, there has been a wife, but he's a bid commissioner. So you're going to say his wife can't go and ask for a grant?
So I think that brings up a great point that by adopting the provision, it would limit the eligibility pool, right? So there are going to be businesses that are, that would be excluded from applying for this grant. It limits the scope to the bid board members, right? Any of the properties that they own would not be eligible or any of the properties that are owned by council members. But it's again, for your discussion.
I have a, yeah. Okay, so piggybacking on what councilman Garrett stated. My point exactly where we were going with this and me and Mr. Mayor, the mayor went with this a while back and we wanted to make sure that we wanted clarity. And one of the clarities that I wanted, I know it's a fine tone where we're going to go with this, but actually, those individuals are actually property managers. So property managers are managing that property and they have a, they have a client that's sitting on that, on that property. And he's proposing as a bid and that property is going to get, going to get fixed up. And that property manager in another year, two or three is going to be able to rent that property out, maybe X, Y, and Z more, maybe. And, and we have real estate, we have right now, we have a cup, that's, that's one of my issues that I was bringing up and with the mayor, we were having a discussion in the last meeting was how do we, how do we leverage or how do we actually get to a point where we're not being conflicted in that point? And, and, and what I mean is that we have, we do have property managers on there that are managing property in downtown that are, are bid board members.
Right, because their businesses are within the downtown boundary.
Yeah. So that's one of the questions and concerns I have. And, and the only reason why is because the, we, we all sit here owners of downtown businesses, but we also want to, or the, the buildings and we also want the building structure downtown to become, that's the reason why we all voted, we all voted for the bid. That's a, we, we may have a different path, but we all want to better downtown. We do want lights, we do want speakers, we do want, that's why we, we voted for that. We do want trees, we do want that. But we also want to make sure we have clarity and we also want to make sure that there is no conflict and no conflict. And I know that all five of us want that. So we want to make sure we get clarity in regards to when we fund this program, we're able openly and rounded, we know that we're going to put more money because I don't want to know that maybe there's a, an agent out there that's professing, hey, I'm going to, I'm going to rent you a property, but I'm going to, I'm also going to get you a bid loan or a grant or whatever. I just want to make sure that there's clarity and there's, there's no conflict with that.
And actually going piggyback on that, you have in quotes here about the discussion says if the BID board member has a stake in the project, which to me, it's whatever stake that they have, whether it's a project, a property management company, whether it's a spouse of an owner, whether, I mean, they have a vested interest, right? So, and here it just says such as, so it's not going to encompass everything, but I think that we have, and I mean, in my opinion, I think that business owner, property owner, or any vested conflict of interest, they are not eligible to score the application that must, they must recuse themselves. So I, I think, in my opinion, I think that it encompasses that, you know, all of those other things that they're talking about. So, but if we need more clarity, making, maybe we could say such as, but not limited to, you know, business owners, property owners, property managements, it's, and then of course adding the, keeping that vested conflict.
I think for now, because of the, because of the outcome, when we started this program, we were had the, the thought of, you know, bringing downtown, right? But as we elected the people, we didn't realize the conflict it was going to actually create. So right now, I think that amongst, how can we get to that point and get out of that later down the road so we can feel a lot more better and understand that we're pouring money in there so we can see an outlook, but know that there's no conflict?
Yeah, and ultimately regardless of what you put in the guidelines, they're still bound by the conflict of interest rules. So even when you're talking about like a property manager, if they have a financial interest, that's going, that's great, $500 or greater is basically what the code says. They are going to be conflicted out too. Again, same, same with a spouse. Your spouse is part of your disqualifying interest. That creates a conflict. So, I mean, the guidelines are great because I think it sets the tone for like what their job is and who is conflicted and who shouldn't be participating in the process. But ultimately, they're still bound by those rules as well.
Are you, are you stating that this, this?
That's not what him and I are explaining. What we're asking is should the language be cleared?
Or does the language fit the, fit the note?
Sure.
Is the, does our language right now fit that note to the, the concerns we have? Does this language fit what we're concerned about?
Well, I think there's a difference too between this, the language that they're proposing is not allowing council members and bid members from applying for the grant. The conflict of interest rules don't necessarily require you to not apply, but you have to recuse yourself. So that's like kind of that, the second level of protection if there are some of these other little nuances that come up. But in regard, I mean, except for the one that you mentioned, Councilmember Garrett, it, it bans council members from that own property from applying for the grant. If you are married, that's community property technically. So it would prevent your spouse from applying too, even without that being specifically.
Okay, and so what would be the, the remedies for this? So let's say that there's a question because this, you know, when you get in the details, it can get pretty complex. It seems pretty basic on the surface that just bid members, right? And city council members that can't benefit from this program or apply for the, this loan or this grant. What happens if there's a question? Where would they, where would they go to get resolution on this? A downtown building owner, whether, you know, whether they're disqualified or not?
I mean, they could reach out to me, they could reach out to staff and they could direct them to me or ask me the question. But ultimately, if you reach out to staff, they're going to ask me, so they can reach out to me as well.
So they could go through the bid, which ultimately would go to you, the city attorney, or they could reach out to council members, would ultimately go to the city attorney?
Correct.
And you would issue an opinion for them?
Correct.
If I may, council, you know, I, I think, you know, if, if the council really wanted to make this as airtight as possible, which I think is what I'm hearing, you could revise the language to say that not only are bid members and council members ineligible to apply, but anyone else that has a vested conflict of interest is also ineligible to apply. Because then that prevents, you know, I think at the last council meeting, there was a discussion about, you know, somebody who is recusing themselves, but is still able to influence the outcome of, of the approval process, that also creates a conflict of interest. So I think there, there's a case to be made for having anybody who has a conflict of interest from applying altogether. And then I think that makes it, you know, and then we can specify if you're a spouse of a council member or a bid member, if you're a property manager, if you, you know, whatever other potential scenarios, but not, but not limited to that. Yeah. You know, I think if that would make council more comfortable, I, I definitely would suggest that.
I just think that this is an area where the city needs to be, we all need to be really transparent or we won't get buy-in from the, the building owners because let's face it, there's not a lot of trust in politics and politicians out there. And when you get money like this, that's kind of a freebie given out and you've got council members who, like the council member says, four of us have our buildings down here and we're involved in businesses, there's the potential for potential conflict of interest. Not that there is one, not that there would be, but we as being on the city council need to, need to clearly direct this to make sure that there is complete transparency. So we get buy-in from everybody. Everybody knows we're all in the same playing field. We're not benefiting from the rules that, that we're making. And everybody I've talked to said, that's a good thing. Now we just have to hammer out the details and make sure that's fair for everybody. So I'm definitely for this.
Was that a for also including in the sentence? Has any stake in the project or vested conflict of interest or not just ineligible to score, but ineligible to apply?
Right, but where are we, where are we defining conflict of interest?
We wanted a little more defined.
You, more defined?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
City attorney, if you could provide the code that specifies what that conflict entails, we can include it in this application.
Do that clean.
So people can see it and they can, so they don't waste their time applying.
Exactly.
Awesome. Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second, but just to clarify, we're, we're approving it with the stipulation that these changes are being made. Okay, yes, I second that.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item two, consideration of the appointment of two council members to serve on a downtown business improvement district logo steering committee.
Alrighty, so the bid is trying to go through the process of getting a logo approved. I think now that we like had the block party, we're like, man, we, we need a logo. So we've brought some iterations to council and just after rounds of revisions, the council has tabled the adoption, it's just not where it needs to be yet. So to better capture council's feedback and really just enhance the participation that you guys have in the process of the creation of the logo, the bid would like to invite you guys to kind of create a steering committee that would meet with the full bid board and just kind of cap, to better capture your guys' feedback and really reflect your input, rather than us having to go through iterations and then presenting it to council, it might be a little more just both cost effective and time effective to have that steering committee created. So the bid is requesting that the council appoint two, two council members to serve on this steering committee.
Okay, just go, do any council members want to volunteer?
Oh, I can volunteer.
Just one more meeting?
Oh, sorry, I will add, it's not one meeting, we anticipate hopefully just two meetings to discuss, it could take long, it could, it could be one meeting, it could take longer. Right now, we're anticipating you guys to just commit to two meetings. The meetings happen the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month, so that would be the July, I apologize, these are.
I nominate Sarah. Will you accept?
Sure.
Okay.
You're going to serve with Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it's only two more meetings.
Two more meetings.
Maybe, two more meetings.
Okay, open up the matter of the public. Public have any opinion on the downtown bid logo and having two council members go to a couple bid meetings and hammer out the logo with them before they bring it back to council? Come on up. Um, we've got public input.
Santiago Segarra, 2209 Thompson. I think it's a great idea to get councilmen involved that kind of moves everything along faster. But I have another question, how come there wasn't a public comment on the previous item? If it was an action item?
Which one?
The one about, the one.
Oh.
Downtown Improvement Grant?
Yeah.
It has been a long night. We can reopen that item, call for public comment?
I just had a simple comment. Great idea, don't get me wrong.
You got six minutes, no, I'm kidding. Three minutes.
Ten, ten, because you forgot. My thing is, it's great and everything and you got to be careful if you start eliminating a lot of people from applying, because here's the thing, if some of the people that are have businesses there, they can say, you know what, if I can't participate, I'm not going to do nothing about some, the downtown, then you're going to end up with four businesses that are awesome because they participated and the owners are just going to be the same. We should have been done.
That's what we're eliminating.
We just want to make sure it's a level playing field for everybody.
No, we're eliminating ourselves.
If I'm an owner and I can't participate, I'm going to say, I'm not going to do nothing to my, what are you going to do? You're going to find me? There's nothing you can do?
They're only eliminated, sir, from participating in the grant, the free money, but they have every right to go to a bid and put their input in.
No, no, I understand.
And get on the bid committee.
But what they're going to say is, well, these people are getting money to better their business, whatever, if I'm not going to be able to participate, then I won't do any improvements to, and then you're going to end up with, downtown is going to look all.
But it's not always about self-interest. You know, I mean, everybody has to take one for the team when they come up and they, they serve in a public sphere. You can't profit from that. And if you don't, if you want to, then don't get on the bid.
No, I understand the work I'm saying is, what they should have done, I said, okay, we had hundred thousand, let's do the whole downtown, everybody. But not, not people put in for a bid, but you guys, the city council, okay, we need this, like the thing we just talked about, you guys already approved it, you were paying some guy, I don't know how much, to come and tell you what you need to do when you already approved it? Doesn't make no sense. You've already approved stuff like that.
We, we didn't.
Like my, my, look, my only concern is if some of these people don't participate and, and someone's going to look all different, right? We want, we're trying to create something that's going to be a beautiful downtown and it may not be because, you know what I'm saying? I don't understand.
The grant was, we're all visioned, the budget is specifics that we need right now that may be independent of the vision and not necessarily part of that. We need trees and lights, you got to pay for that, Mr. Segarra, and you don't pay for it with the grant. So what's your next, sorry, what's, did you have a comment?
I was just going to, just a comment real quick that, I think, Mr. Mayor, that we, when we, when we came from, when we began this, this, this task, we looked at each other and said, and, and granted, with all the fighting and whatever we got going on, we said, in order to keep the integrity of the business bid, we know, we all sit here as business owners, let's first back ourselves out and not get involved and let everybody else get the money and do it. So that's what we're doing. We're, we're alienating all four of us to not be involved and letting everybody else share the money. That's what we're doing.
Which I understand, you know, I'm an educated person, I understand. But what I'm saying is, when it comes to doing the speakers, the trees and stuff, then they're going to say, well, you know what, you got to excuse yourself. We're not going to put trees in front of yours because, you know, you got money, you should be able to do yours.
Go in front of the buddy.
We're not going to put lights because, you know what I'm saying?
We're not going to do that.
Just a little different.
Yeah.
What's your next, what's your next comment? Since I missed that one, but you got it, you got a comment on that item two?
I just said.
The logo, the logo. Did you have a comment on the logo?
Oh, no, not on, I was just saying that it was a wonderful thing up there.
Awesome.
We went to so many meetings here and they talk about the logo and it ain't happening. So maybe with the two councilmen on the committee, I mean, and nothing against you guys, because you guys are doing an awesome job, but sometimes when you got somebody else in there that's got a major interest in it, they, they tend to move things along.
Thank you. Any other public comment on this item on the downtown bid logo? Do we have anybody online or on the phone, the downtown bid logo? Is there a motion to approve the steering committee?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Item three, consideration of the board and commission vacancies and appointments.
Good roll.
Okay.
Mayor and council members, what you have before you, as you know, the city council appoints members to various boards and commissions that focus on specific issues, policies, and programs, ensuring responsiveness to community needs and public engagement. Citizens interested in joining a commission must submit an application to the city clerk's office. That application is available on the city's website and at city hall. Attachment A in the packet lists the commissioner positions with terms expiring this month and vacancies, including names and terms of the appointees. Attachment B includes incumbent interest forms and the current applications that we have for council consideration. I do like to, I would like to mention that after the printing of the agenda in the packet, I received two additional applications for planning commission, and that was from Mr. Doug Kessler and Mrs., Ms., Ms. Betty Stanbridge, who I believe are both in the audience today. And those applications were emailed to you on Friday, the same day that they were received.
All right, looks like we have a number of folks that reapplied for the commission. Did we have any comments before we went through the voting process? Do we have any member, the members of the public? Any folks who are here who are candidates who would like to stand up and be heard about why they would like to join the commission? Anybody online or on the phone like to talk about the commission process?
As a reminder to the caller online, please use star nine to raise your virtual hand and we will select you from the meeting queue. Mayor Robertson, at this time, I see no hands raised.
Okay, thank you. With that, we'll bring the matter back to council. Since we've got these folks who have reapplied, I'd like to start it out and make a motion just to reappoint the people who have reapplied for the commission. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Would you call the roll, please?
And that's for everyone in green.
That's right, everybody agreed.
Got it, thank you. Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
No.
Councilmember Trejo?
No.
Mayor Protemcho?
No.
Okay, motion fails.
I'll make a motion to approve, I'd like to go section by section, make a motion to approve Doug Kessler and Betty Stanbridge, and I apologize if I ruin your name. So, and I'd like to go step by step, please, if I could.
I second that motion.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
No.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
No.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve Yolanda Torres and Ken Roberson.
I second that.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Um, yes. Pioneer Village?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Louis Franco, Mike Valverde, and Joe Fidor.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes. Okay, measure S Oversight Committee.
Same thing, Mr. Mayor, Louis Franco.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes, for the downtown business improvement, I'd like to nominate Ramza Curry. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Robertson?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
No.
Councilmember Trejo?
No.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Okay, so that's, those are the appointments for the commissions. I want to thank everybody, all the citizens, for applying for this and giving their.
Mayor Robertson, I, I do apologize, we also have, we need a vote for Mike Valverde.
Yes.
Oh.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Call the roll, please.
Mayor Protemcho?
Yes.
Councilmember Trejo?
Yes.
Councilmember Garrett?
Sorry, yes. I'm sorry.
Yes.
It's been a long night.
Long night.
Councilmember Mendoza Navarro? Mayor Robertson?
Yes, that concludes the commission appointments. Thanks everyone for stepping up and serving our community. It's really much appreciated. Item four, this is a public hearing for Proposition 218 process for the proposed assessment charge for landscape and lighting maintenance district number one. And item B, which is a related item, consideration of a resolution approving the engineer's report identifying the assessments and the property against which it is assessed within the landscape lighting and maintenance district number one, conduct public hearing regarding proposed assessment rates, approving rates for LLMD, and directing collection thereof by placement of the assessment on the 2024-2025 Fresno County tax roll.
Evening, council, I have a short presentation to kind of recap the process and walk through how we got here. Hey, so as background, the project, the process started on May 6, 2024, when the council initiated the resolution with the intent to increase rates and set the public hearing for tonight, July 1, 2024. Tonight's public hearing will consider any written protests received by the city during the 45-day mandatory required period prior to the public hearing to contest any of the rates within the seven zones which are proposed to have increases in their assessments for services. Next slide, please. So seven out of this, seven out of the 11 zones, LLMD zones located within the city are proposed to have increased assessments pursuant to the engineer's report prepared by the city engineer. Increases between zones vary, and the increases are not uniform across different zones because they have different amenities and facilities. So you will not see a standard like a CPI increase across the zones. So you will not see a standard s- like a CPI increase across the zones that are based on the facilities that are located within each area. Um, the engineer's reports estimated costs for providing the services within the identified zones, uh, compared to the past practice of comparing invoices or other items, um, and, um, dividing those amongst the zones equally. Using a forward, you know, facing approach, using, uh, current practices for estimation of services, we're able to identify and project what those costs between the zones are to provide a, uh, level of service associated with the amenities located within each subdivision. Um, the L M D's assessments are for specialized services within those zones paid for by those residents, and therefore, they should not be subsidized by the general public, uh, outside of those zones. The need for increasing the assessment prevents subsidizing, uh, the cost to provide these amenities to each of these zones from the general fund. So if the assessments aren't increased, it's an, it's an equity, it's an equity issue in terms of residents receiving a service that they're paying, not, they're not receiving a service or an amenity that they're otherwise paying for. Um, increasing the assessment just prevents those inequities, uh, community-wide so that tax dollars are being spent where they should be and not used to subsidize, uh, improvements, services, and other amenities for various selective subdivisions within the city. Uh, next slide, please. So the engineer's report identified costs through the zones utilizing current industry practices. Um, they show a proposed increase as well as the current maximum assessment currently levied within those subdivisions or, or within those zones, uh, uh, L L M D zones. Um, it includes maps, and it actually identifies the cert, the, um, features and amenities in the areas being landscaped. Uh, I must say, those are very nice maps to help identify those amenities that are easy to read for the public so that they understand sort of the areas that are benefiting from their assessments. Um, it also provides a spreadsheet of the proposed increased assessments identified by the city engineer that would then be forwarded to the Fresno County tax collector to be placed, uh, and collected on the tax roll for twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. The proposed increases, um, as I stated, were between seven zones, and they range between, uh, four percent and twenty-five percent. Again, bearing practices for estimation, um, using those past practices, there may have been, uh, coding issues with, um, invoicing and other items, using a forward-facing approach, using, um, uh, unit, unit values based on square footage of landscaping and what that typical cost annually is. Um, cost for utilities based on number of streetlights helps staff to understand what the cost should be in the, in the coming fiscal year. So, um, with that, if, um, protests are not met, the proposed assessments that were identified, the increases would be approved, um, by council and, um, go forward in the, as I stated, in the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year tax roll. Uh, next slide, please. That's the last slide. Yeah, that's the last slide. So, um, with that, staff is recommending that we count protests, um, that were filed with the city clerk, and if a, uh, valid protest is not found, the council adopt the proposed rates identified in the engineer's report along with the engineer's report. Five for L L M D zones. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, does council have any clarifying questions before we open the matter to the public, since this is a public hearing?
I gotta, I gotta ask one question. You stated at the very beginning, you were, you went from matching receipts to, can you walk that back again and tell me the system you used and what it's called and how it's worked?
So, best practices uses unit values for specific costs based off of real data that is identified, uh, in providing similar services. So when you project out, you can say it costs so many square foot per landscape area to provide said service. So like sixty cents a square foot just around or something along those lines.
Okay, so in, in layman's terms, what we're doing is we're gathering invoices and accumulations of hours worked at that area, and that's what we should be billing, but in reality, the perspective, like right now, we got Orange Street on Orange. There's, there's, there's a lot of abundance of stuff that needs to be cleaned that we don't see and we don't take account for, right? So this way, you're actually looking at the whole area and you're actually defining.
Correct. Um, the L L M D zones are specific identified areas that were adopted at the time that most subdivisions were approved, along with the assessments to charge for those services. So using the areas that were identified within the improvement plans and what's in the field, you're able to identify square footages, irrigation, like linear footed irrigation, number of, um, valves for just the irrigation part for maintenance, right? And you can identify how much water is estimated based off of the current climate we're in. So there's a various, there's various methodologies and S and, um, and values that go towards square footage of maintaining landscaping. In addition, we're able to identify how many streetlights we have and what the estimated usage per kilowatt hour of each streetlight is, so you can identify utility costs by each area as well.
Any other clarifying questions from council? With that, we'll open the public hearing. Does the public, does the public have anything they would like to say at this time? Do we have anybody online or on the phone? Okay, we'll bring the matter back. We do have public input.
Hello, Jovita Camacho. Um, I had, I did have a question in regards to the L L M Ds. Um, if you guys do pass it, I know that we have on the website, like, uh, when the streets get swept, uh, there's a schedule. So if we do pass this and we do increase it, I think we need a little bit more transparency in regards to like when, uh, the actual landscaping is going to be done, only because a lot of people will blast on news around Selma or whatever social media. They'll say, oh, Orange Street hasn't been done, or whatever street hasn't, Nelson hasn't been done. You know, it would be like more of a transparency of, okay, on this day, this is going to be done. That way, there's a, a work order and stuff is, uh, the work is, is completed, um, just like when the streets are swept. That, 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 that was all.
Any other input?
I'm Michael Barone at, uh, Alton in Selma, and, uh, my, uh, where I live, it's right on McCall and Alton. There's a fence area, all, and there's a planting strip on both sides, right, all along the street. And that area, you know, I, uh, the fence was falling down. That's part, I, I don't know, you know, they told me the fence is mine. I have to take care of it. And, uh, to be fair, fair, uh, you know, I replaced the whole fence. It cost quite a bit. But still, my neighbor next door, he, he fixed his fence, and it looks, all looks nice. But we have fences on both sides of those street, uh, McCall, the main line from Barbara to all the way to, uh, Oak and all those streets, that, that the fences are halfway, you know, they're good and some are all messed up. To make, you're talking about beautifying and making the community a little bit better. Those landscape strips, if they're gonna get more money for that, they need to, uh, you know, work along with, uh, residents to fix that up. It looks, it looks, you know, bad, and, uh, a lot of the plants, they're gone. A lot of those refleptus, you know, the plants that are there, they're, they're just a, a catch for black widows, for mice and everything else. And times to re- refresh, renew all that landscaping, and, and I think you would have. Both sides of the street, if you want to make Selma a little bit more appea, uh, appealing, like a lot nicer, especially right in that area where dancer metal, those, both sides of the street need to be, you know, refreshed, renewed. And also, and then I'd like to say that house on the corner of Alton and Wright needs to be cleaned up. I'm sorry. I don't know what's gonna take, it's gonna, it's already been burned once. It's been, the fences had been brought down, graffiti, people had got in there and write, and scribbled all over it. It's, it's sad. Representative of our area needs to put some effort into that. This is the second time I've gotten up here, and the fence, there's a fence right there. It's right by the high school. It's all fallen down and weeds and everything else. What does that show? Talk about beautifying, you see, making Selma a little bit better? Let's move on it. What is, what is it gonna take? Uh, another fire in that same house that's already all messed up and burned? People are gonna get there and get in there. The fence is already down. They took the, the, that metal fence around. They took that, um, the, the fencing off there. There's people getting in there again. Something has to be moved, and you want to see, that, that's things, that fence also needs to be, I don't know if that's part of the assessment area that needs to be replaced, but it looks bad, especially people that come to Selma. High school, you know, you go down Wright Street, going towards the high school. What, what, what picture does that show? Selma. Does that show really all that lot has been there? That house has been there for years. I'm sorry, it, it needs to be done.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other public input at this time? That will close the public hearing. Oh, got one more.
Jim Havil, seventeen oh one, Dinuva. You know, that gentleman made a good comment right now. I think, you know, uh, uh, I want to say we should read out, well, do we have a code enforcement in the area, in our city? Asking you guys, we have a code enforcement, don't we? City of Selma, yes or no?
Code enforcement is part of P D, and we do have two code enforcement officers.
Maybe, you know, he made a good point, you know, uh, there is a house right around the high school. It's, you know, it's been burnt, vacant, and, you know, I understand what he's saying. Uh, when we come into our community, it, it looks like a blight situation. I think maybe you should reach out to the, to the property owner that, of that area, uh, in our area, says, hey, man, you have a, a problem here. Can, can you alleviate this issue? You know, um, you know, it, it becomes a, especially at a house, it becomes a, a hel, a fire hazard or, or homeless issue situation, and we don't want that in our community to. They go in there, light a fire, they take off, and they're gone, you know? Uh, you know, it's like, it's like anything else in the roads over here, brush fires, you know, they, they, they smoke a cigarette, throw it, they, they take off, and it, and it's, before you know it, we got a blaze. But a situation in our community, I think we should take a long look at the, uh, drive-through our community and take a look at some of these areas, um, like, um, like you said, down on McCall and situations like that, and see if we can get, contact the property owner and see if we can alleviate some of these issues. Is, uh, maybe say, hey, if you beautify it, it, this will keep you from, down the road from getting cited for, uh, an endangered fence falling on somebody, liability issues, you know? Uh, you know, I, I, I get what he's saying, and I think it's a, a valid question right there, and he, he's right. Because we want to showcase our town. You come down the main roads, Flo, McCall, and, you know, Nebraska and all these other areas, come down roads, and if you see something like that, you're gonna say, man, I don't want to live here. What's going on here? You know what I mean? So you go to areas like, maybe you go to Flores or, or communities like that, they'll say, you don't see that. They're on it. So we gotta find out, uh, a solution there and fix it with the property owners. And that's all I gotta say. Thank you.
Any other input before we close the public hearing? That we will close the public hearing and bring the matter back to council. Does council have any comments before we call for a motion on this?
I just have a quick, um, comment. Um, deputy city manager, I know you did so much on this, and I get it, you know, but I just didn't agree with the process. I still look at this, and I think that some of these rates are, it's a steep, it's a jump. And if we would have probably did it in maybe two years, that would have probably been a little more feasible. But to throw this on on top of everything else that's going up, I think that's just my, my own opinion is I just think it's a little too steep at this time. So that's just my opinion.
Any other comments?
And before we take a vote, we need to hear the protests, um, how many protests there are, and make sure there's not a sufficient protest.
Okay.
Excuse me, sorry. The, um, protests received, there were three protest letters received, and that was for zone four with a total percent of one point four percent.
Well, that's not enough protest letters to stop the rate increase. Okay, and then I'll weigh in. Just a related question, we were hearing from the, on the street signs that the, um, Public Works were having issues with identifying the street signs that were indistinct, of which there are a lot in Selma. These are some great maps for identifying the street signs. Maybe these could be used for that when Public Works goes out. I know this is a little off the, the subject here, um, but that was one of the reasons given for Public Works not repairing the street signs.
If I could clarify, the, the process that the Public Works Department is using to
or identifying, I should say.
Replace the street signs is they were following the street sweeping route. Um, but then they are also targeting the major intersections as well. Um, I, I don't, I don't think, and, you know, I, I may have missed, um, the comment about, you know, not being able to identify street signs that were, um, that were not visible. But I, um, from what I understand, the reason that the street signs, um, are being delayed in terms of replacement is obtaining the materials necessary to, to create the new street signs.
We, we started out with, yeah, the, the street signs were, um, they were following the street sweepers. That was another Public Works director. Then we have Public Dev- Works Director Hun, who said that there was an issue of actually finding them, you know, plotting them out in, um, in the city. I remember the meeting itself when he, when he said that, and there was no follow-up on that. But it appears that that problem has been resolved. He's been able to identify those signs, where they're located. And you're saying, city manager, that the issue now is just, um, actually ordering those new signs and, and manufacturing or putting the names on them and putting them back. Is that correct?
Yeah, and plotting just means, it doesn't mean finding them on a map. It means the, using the plotter to create the, the vinyl, um, that actually gets, um, glued to the signs. Um, so, but yeah, it's the manpower and, and, um, more importantly, the material.
Got it. So it's more of a staffing issue and a material issue than an actual finding. Thank you for that clarification, and I would agree with Councilmember Gara. I just think it's too steep, too fast in an ear, in a year of really increasing costs, um, and they're all increasing. It's not just this, but I would, I would rather see a, a graduated rate increase on this. Is there a motion on this agenda item?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call the roll, please.
This is a quick question. This is for both A and B, correct? Okay.
Did you want to amend your motion, council member?
No, um, that's what I thought was, it was for A and B.
I think it's for A and B.
You. Councilmember Mendoza Navarro?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Gara?
No.
Councilmember Treheo?
Yes.
Mayor Robertson?
Um, no. Motion passes, and with that, we will move on to our future agenda items. This is the time when council requests future agenda items. This is not subject to public comment, and items require a consensus to be placed on future agendas. Does council have any items they would like for a future agenda at this time? Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll start out. Um, I'd like to, um, add as a future agenda item, um, keeping the shelter open on Sundays, the local animal shelter open on Sundays. Is there a consensus to put that on the next agenda or a future agenda, uh, agenda that's within the next few meetings?
I'll second.
Okay, is there, is that a yes? Okay, so that's consensus. Okay.
Wh- which meeting are we, um, was it specified?
Um, it wasn't specified, next one to three meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, can we have that also with some, um, analysis of what it's gonna cost us and how we can actually bring it to a point? Maybe go back and look at what, what our operating structure is now, Monday through Friday, Monday through Saturday or Monday through Sunday, and how we can add services, maybe in the, if you guys are okay with that, maybe we can add some services during the week also, some later times.
Absolutely. Yeah, we could add services for the animal shelter and the related costs for that.
Yeah. Can get it done.
Okay, um, what about, um, if, could we add? Oh, I just wanted to see about the last item I requested at the last council meeting, um, for restoring oral communications at the end of the meeting. We get that in the next meeting? That would be a revision of the handbook, I believe, city attorney.
Yeah, I think the ultimate consensus ended up being just discussing amendments to the council handbook as a whole. So, yes, that's. So, yes, that's, that'll be on.
Next meeting, thank you. And then I'm just clarifying that Mid Valley will be here for the next council meeting to discuss operation issues. That is a huge issue right now.
Um, any specific operation issues?
Everything we heard tonight, I mean, from having to take the trash to the front from the alleys, uh, uh, everybody's talking about that. That's a huge issue.
If, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um. You know, I know we're gonna have Mid Valley, but I like, I like our staff to give us a presentation as to. I mean, where, where the comfort, conversation started as to what, where did it lead up to and who needs it, where did it come from?
Yeah, because I, this came, pardon me.
Because I've been. Receiving calls that, you know, as our staff and our, we're the ones that are pushing this and I'd like to know where the narrative, where the narrative is at and. What the, what's the, what's the reasons behind, I mean, if somebody has a reason as to, we should be coming out of the alley or. I wanna, I want, I want information, I would appreciate the information.
And on that, um, I think it would be a good idea to invite, make sure that the engineers here, make sure that. S K F is here, Cal Waters, anybody that has infrastructure in the alleys so that we can get that input as well. Because that may be something as to why it ended up changing that way or why, you know, why it led to that. Decision.
Uh, you know, I think that's important, important to find. Excuse me, did you want to talk?
Oh, I just wanted to know, I just want the clarification on the amendments that were done after the fact. I want that brought back to, uh, council as well so that we can see why these changes were done after the fact. Because that's what they stated on the June third meeting that it wasn't in their contract at that time, they made these changes with the city manager. So I just, exactly, so I'd like to get that clarification because they stood back there and they clarified that. They said it to two citi, to ci, two citizens that were back there and said that they were in. They were in a, um, conversation, these were amendments that were between the city and them. It wasn't part of the contract.
Two citizens said that, not, not somebody from Mid Valley, but they were, that was what was told.
Mid Val, it was a representative of Mid Valley, he was back there.
Oh, good.
He stated.
Do you know who that was?
I don't, I don't, I didn't get his name. But I would just like the amendments.
I agree, and I think we need to find out how that happened, you know, because things are. And they're changing on us right before our very eyes and we approved this contract a long time ago, I would have thought we, you know, this is not pointing fingers, it's just, we should be. At a point where. This is seamless, you know, we've had plenty of time to get this down and people don't really know where to take the trash. I think I mentioned earlier, we don't even have our new trash cans. And, I mean, we should, we should, we're like anybody else, we're like any other citizen and most citizens, I believe, have their other trash cans by now. And now people having to take their trash cans out to the front and we heard tonight's physical problem. I'd like to have representatives from McCall Village here to, um, nail that down because we're hearing all sorts of things about that. And I think this is a, this is a really important council meeting, agenda item to have. Not to pick on Mid Valley or city staff or city council or the public, but to. Resolve this, cause we just want to have a seamless trash pickup service, that's, that's all we're looking for and, and we deserve that. As citizens of Selma, we're paying, uh, good money for this trash collection and it's a new service and, um. We should get the service that we deserve as, as citizens on this, so thank you for confirming that. I hope that we have the, the people from Mid Valley that can make those decisions and if the city pushes back and it's. And hopefully it's an action item or. An item, let me ask you this, is it gonna be an item where we can push back and say, we want the, we want the trash. To be back in the alley, if that's the consensus of council and if that's consensus of the people. Will we be able to do that or will we have to have another meeting?
Yeah, I, I think that the council could make a decision at that meeting if you wanted to.
We could, we could direct if that's the consensus. Okay. Any other items for future agenda items? But that will move on to, thank you, everybody, but that will move on to, um, the City Manager Report.
Thank you, Council, uh, members, uh, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Nothing to report specifically except, um, want to thank the staff, uh, for their hard work, um, especially while I was away on vacation, happy to be back. Thank you especially to Deputy City Manager Keen for filling in for me at the coun, the last council meeting. And just wanted to remind everybody of the third of July celebration and, um, I know Liz is, is gonna mention it, but hope to see everybody there. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney?
I actually have a couple of things tonight, um, so first I wanted to talk about. Or just mention that, uh, the Supreme Court case Grants Pass versus Johnson that came out last week. I've already received a ton of questions about it, so, um, I know it's probably coming here as well. Essentially, the Supreme Court, um, stated that. Anti ca, anti camping ordinances were constitutional and were not by, a violation of the Eighth Amendment. So it doesn't necessarily mean that the city can go out now and start issuing fines and punishments for. Sleeping or camping in public, but it does allow the city to adopt an anti camping ordinance. Which at this point is considered constitutional, so, um, I think it would be good in the future to bring an item for discussion to council. About the implications of the case and, and that way you guys can provide any direction, if anything, that you guys might want to take based on. The ruling in that case, so I just wanted to update you on that, know it is on my radar and that we are working on it and studying the case. So that if you guys have any questions, you can reach out to our office.
Is it premature to have that agenda item now on an anti camping ordinance or is it, are you ready? And your firm ready to bring back some pointers on that, on what to adopt?
We can, I mean, I, I can do that whenever, whenever it work, whenever it fits in the agenda too, I know we have a couple. Packed agendas coming up, I think, so maybe just in the next couple of meetings, wherever it fits best, we can do, we can do that.
Council good with that? Because of the Supreme Court decision?
Yep.
Okay, great.
And then, um, unfortunately, the gentleman left, but, um, I did want to provide an update on the Alton property that was mentioned. Our office is working on that, um, it is a legal process, unfortunately, um, you can't just enter someone's property and abate it. Necessarily, so we have to get an, a, what's called an abatement warrant from the court in order to enter that property and. Abate the nuisance, so that is being worked on, so it's not, uh, it's not being ignored, I just wanted to assure.
What's the timeframe on that, City Attorney?
Uh, it'll probably be another month before we have a, before we have a warrant and then we can start the work. And then, um, last but not least, I did want to provide an update because it was mentioned, uh, that it is a public record. That the city does have an ongoing lawsuit with Caglia. Um, I just wanted to update the public and members of the council that all, um, of Caglia's claims. That they were the lowest responsible bidder or that the city was required to select the lowest responsible bidder were dismissed. And they were dismissed after a motion filed by our, our office, it was argued in front of the Superior Court and was ultimately granted. So those claims no longer exist.
Thank you. Okay, Deputy City Manager Keen?
Nothing to report.
Okay, Administrative Services Director, Janie Vanegas.
That was a wake up call. I'm happy to say that we have our new phone system that was online as of Friday, June twenty eighth. It did, we did encounter some problems going from an old system to the new system. However, everything has been resolved and now we are starting to just, um, we have a couple of smaller things that we need to implement, but we are online with our new phone system.
Thank you. Meaning Services?
I do have a few items to report on, so I did want to give you guys an update on our summer series, so our summer series has officially ended, we did three Friday nights in June. So the first night was Lilo and Stitch, movie in the park, and then the second night was the Sandlot, another movie in the park, which each showing. I think we had over a hundred and fifty participants in the park, so I take that as a huge success. And then, um, our last event was this last Friday, which was the block party, which was probably one of my favorite events to, to host. And so I just want to thank all the staff that participated and helped me, um, and our department with that event. I look forward to doing more similar events like that in the future, so, um, but just to segue from that block party, um. Our department is currently working with the downtown bid to host three more Friday night events in the downtown and so. Um, in front of you is a flyer for, um, the downtown food truck, um. Food truck event that will be taking place in the parking lot on, um, High Street and First Street, so. And they're gonna block off that parking lot, they're gonna have about four or five food trucks come out, a beer garden and some live music and so. That'll be a good event to kind of wrap up the summer, um. This month and so those events are on the twelfth, the nineteenth and the twenty sixth, so we encourage the community to come out to those events and just partake in some yummy, yummy food. The other thing that I wanted to report on was, um, July third is still a go, so. We're still gonna be having our fireworks show even though it's gonna be a little warm and so. The gates still open at five thirty, but we are encouraging people to, to maybe hold off on coming, coming out until it cools down a little bit and so. We've also adjusted some things, um, within our department, so, um, we will not be having a kid zone only because the, the temperatures are just gonna be too hot. Um, and that could be a liability for us and so, and I've also pushed the music to start at seven P M and so. The community is still encouraged to come out, our food vendors will still be out, they'll have, um, refreshments and yummy food out there as well. And then this year, the only thing that's a little different is we are gonna have stadium seating again. And so, um, the community will be allowed to sit in the stadium. That was something that was restricted last year and so, um, we are bringing that back and then just as a warning. The doors for the third of July close at nine P M. So if you do want to enter the stadium, just make sure to be there before nine P M, the doors will be, um, will be closed, so that way the fireworks show can commence at about nine twenty, so. The last thing that I did want to touch bases on is the cooling center, so we will open the cooling center starting Wednesday. And that'll be open until further notice for the most part, cause we have a really big heat wave coming in, so that'll be open at the Selma Police Department from two to seven. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anything from fire tonight?
Nothing to report from fire department, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, Public Information Officer?
I think City Manager usually advises that City Hall will be closed on the fourth of July, so I just want to remind everyone that. Uh, City Hall will be closed for the fourth of July, um, along with that, there's a, a couple of other things that we've been posting on social media. As a reminder to everyone online, mayor and council members and those that are still here. The, uh, fire book, firework booths have been posted as well, there are, uh, ten nonprofits that are, uh, selling fireworks. We encourage, uh, all the residents of Selma to purchase fireworks from those stands and a reminder that. By purchasing those and staying away from illegal fireworks, you will save yourself some money because there are. Extra patrols that will be, um, happening with both fire and police and those administrative fines. Start at, I believe, a thousand, a thousand five hundred and then for the third, two thousand, and I think we've all seen. Some residents get fined two thousand dollars for shooting at more than, um, one of those illegal fireworks. The other thing, as we discussed, the, uh, with the heat, the, um, Animal Services Center has postponed our second, uh, low cost vaccine and licensing clinic. That was originally scheduled for July second and that will be changed for, uh, sometime in the fall when it's cooler and safer for all of our pets. Think, um, along with the fourth of July and the fireworks, we're very concerned with the pets, as, as Mayor Robertson had mentioned earlier. That has been a big push for Animal Services Center to, um, microchip pets and make sure that, uh, they find their way home when the fourth of July happens.
Thank you. Anything for Public Works tonight?
No, nothing from Public Works, thank you.
Thank you. Police? Thank you, sir. All right, Council reports, Councilmember Mendoz Navarro?
Uh, yes, so I attended the Parks Workshop, um, that was a really, um, nice workshop, I was able to, um, give my input. And, um, I, I really wish that there was more people that attended, so I'm really glad that you're, um, putting out the, um, Q R code so that people can take the survey. So I will be encouraging people to take those surveys because it's very important, you know, because their voice does matter. And I attended the, the downtown block party, I really enjoyed it. We saw a lot of people, there was, there was one person that never in my wildest dreams did I think that I would run into somebody, but I, I ran into a really old friend that used to. Come from, um, Texas, um, every year in the summer and she was actually here for a birthday party, so, um, I was so excited to see her. Kind of on a personal note, and I, I am part of the Fresno Madera Continuum of Care. For, you know, the homeless and so I'm really excited that we're wanting to, um, have conversations and I'm sure we're gonna have conversations about the Supreme Court case. And how that impacts, you know, the, um, the unhoused population. Also, I attended, um, in a housing element. For the city of Madera, it was for the city of Madera, but one of the things that stood out to me and, and really. Gave me, um. Like, I don't know if you want to say like a boost, but, uh, one of the developers talked about how important it is to work with the city. And make sure that the infrastructures are put in because of the fact that, um, that's what's needed, right? Because if tho, they don't partner with the city in leveraging those bonds or anything like that, then the cost of the house. Is more expensive to the end user or to the homeowner than it is if they partner up with the cities. And so, um, when I heard that, I was like, yes, that's what we did in Selma, so I was really excited, um, that, uh, you know, the infrastructure is very important. And especially those partnerships with the city. And as a citizen had mentioned, I wasn't gonna mention anything, um, but I'm really flattered that they're continuing to re, you know, to research me and follow me and everything. But I was appointed as the Executive Director, um, for the city, for the Housing Authority of the City of Madera. And that would just happen like two weeks ago, I didn't, I wasn't gonna post anything or say anything about that, but since it got brought up, I, um, wanted to. You know, um, go ahead and mention that and one of the things is that that, that position, um, is really actually. I guess, th- the negativity or the, 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 um, narrative is that, it's like, we, we. We get told, you don't care about the city because you don't live here, you don't care about the city because you don't work here. But the thing is that every single one of us that's sitting up here has different experiences, we have different roles in our lives, we have different, um, positions. And every single one of has, every single one of us has different experiences, so we have different perspectives of what it is to run a city. Or to, you know, what we're doing in the city and so regardless of whether I work in the city of Selma, um, I still care for my city. Regardless of the city manager, um, doesn't live in the city of Selma, he still cares for the city. And so we're, we're here to, to, um. You know, I'm here to work together with everyone and I, and I don't like that we have this negativity and that the narrative is, is, is just, you know. Blasting the three of us, but, um, the thing is that we've done a lot for the city and going back and reading the minutes, um, we had fourteen. Projects that have been completed and that's just the minimum of what the city has done. Whether it's a five zero vote, whether it's a three two vote, whatever it is, we have fourteen accomplished or, um, projects that are, are continuing and, and building our future. So I just wanted to, um, I mentioned that and one more thing is, uh, this year I'll be celebrating twenty five years in the public sector. So I'm not new to, you know, any of this, even though it's a different, you know, housing, public service is still public service, twenty five years. And twenty three of those years were in Fresno and so I've learned a lot, which have, has actually accomplished or helped me to accomplish. The goals that I've set and the fact that I, um, am sitting in the position that I am and so for that, um, I just wanted to say thank you to the staff. Cause I understand from your perspective, um, City Manager, I understand from your perspective, cause I have a board that I have to answer to. So, um, I just wanted to say thank you for your hard work.
Councilmember Trehu?
So, uh, first of all, I'd like to, uh, give a shout out to a couple of the Police Department. About two weeks ago. About two weeks ago, I called my aunt. Was at Dr. Butterfield's right by the police department and she really can't walk and her husband can't really walk and they drove up there. And why am I stating this is because when my aunt called me and told me what was going on, what happened, it really hit me, but it really hit me to a point where I needed to come and say this because, you know, these little things really matter and I wanna, I wanna do a shout out to the police department. So they went to the doctor's office, it's a chiropractic, and she went and got her fixed, but she couldn't, she was walking out, she was on a walker and the walker slipped and Don, Uncle Don couldn't, couldn't get the walker. And there was police officers walking by and they ran over there and they got the walker and they locked him and they took him and they put him in the truck. And they were actually, you know, started, they were scared and they were, and it was really nice to hear what the officer told her and the officer said, she said, "Thank you," and he said, "No, ma'am, that's what we're here for. We're here to serve, we're here to take care of you." And, and to me, and, and, you know, it's not a hidden, I think everybody posted on the social media, I have businesses out of the country and I was out of the country. They called me and told me what happened and I was really impressed because of the fact that that's our police department, that's our officers, that's our staff, that's our staff doing everything they got to be doing for this community with pride. And I really appreciate and I commend you guys for doing the hard work. I really thank you guys for that 'cause it really means a lot. Not just because it's a family member, but because the, what they, what they actually, what they actually said, "Hey, we're here to serve. We're not just here for the crime, we're here to serve our community members." So for that, I shout that out. Also, you know, these last six weeks, I've been, you know, people have been coming and asking why I've actually been walking my district and I've been talking to my, my district. And I wanna do a shout out again to the Public Works and our city manager, especially Megan, thank you for, you guys are working on that, that job. You know, in municipal government, it doesn't just happen. You know, there's things that has to be, there's processes. So I know you guys are all looking in my district that have been talking to me. Thank you guys for coming and you guys see, you guys see the changes. My staff, our staff's been out there picking up those, you know, by, by a mailbox, there's backpacks, there's chairs, there's, people are just leaving stuff everywhere. And our staff is really doing the job, they're going out there and they're chasing it. Public Works is out there, might not have to be doing it, but they're doing it. Why they're doing it? Because they know that they love this community, they want to work for this community. So my shout out is to the Public Works that's been out there working and following, following through with what they, what they, what we've been pushing them to, right? And, and, and for my community, thank you guys for coming and reaching out. And, you know, I thank you guys for coming and asking me respectfully and saying, "Hey, can you help us out?" Yeah, you know what, that's what we're here for. Again, also, next couple of months, I'll be stepping up and we'll be having communications every month or every two, three months so people can come and talk to us. You know, open doors, open door format instead of doing, doing, you know, attacks. And once again, I wanna, I wanna wish everybody a happy 4th of July, just like in the last five years. I have two big, I have two, two big great parentees, Max, I call him Maxwell, and Maddie. We, we, we stay home, me and my wife stay home every 4th of July to take care of our dogs. I want everyone to please take care of their dogs. It's a really, really, really important holiday for us to take care of our animals because those are, especially me not having kids, those are my kids. So to all my staff, to everyone, I wish you guys a, to all the public, I wish you guys a happy 4th of July, a safe, happy 4th of July. But I really want to go back and commend the police department, Public Works, all the staff here, everything you guys have been doing, I really commend you guys. And, and, and the fruit, you know, it's gonna, it's always gonna be paying off. So for that, I really, really, really thank you guys for all the hard work you guys are doing and thank you guys.
Councilmember Guerra?
Okay. I attended the Selma American Legion Post 12 Suicide Awareness Prevention Event at the Selma Veteran Plaza. It was such a nice event. They had bikers that came from all over and they did do a great ceremony out there. Also, we were able to celebrate one of the members of the Legion, Sarkis Israeli that turned 100 years old that day. And it was such an emotional day because, you know, he started crying and he said that the Legion was his family. And it was amazing, it was still a nice event to see that his family, which was Pete Israeli and Randy, that were there. And, but it was, it was really a beautiful and very touching event. The other event that I did also attend was the Cohoes 13 CVTC graduation. And I have to say, out of probably all the graduations, I might have missed maybe one, two, maybe? But this one was such a heartfelt graduation. There was two speakers, one was actually one of my friend's son who came from Selma. And the other one was from Dinuba, I believe, Marcos. And his story, I think there was probably not even a dry eye that day. It was very emotional. He gave a, a speech that really touched a lot of people because what he tried to say is without this program, he wouldn't have had a second chance. He did so much, was raised by a single parent, was probably in the prison system for at least six to eight years. I mean, it was really sad, but he made it and he became a leader of this graduation team or graduation cohort. But again, I just want to say that was an amazing graduation and, you know, I'm thankful and I'm glad that we have this type of partnership to offer this to these kids because not all kids go to college. And this was another, just another, I would say, door for these individuals that can do these type of programs and possibly get a good job. And that's what he's trying to go for. So it was just a very beautiful, I would say, one of the best graduations I've been to so far. And then that same day, I also attended the block party, which was really great. I want to say kudos to Liz and to Alicia. I know she left already, but I think these girls, they did a great job. And considering the heat, I mean, 100, it was like 106 out there, there was still a breeze. There was so much going on, but you know, even the folks that were going in to see the Jersey Boys, they even came out and still got to dance for an hour. I mean, it was, it was great, it was a great event. So many, the citizens had nothing but positive feedback and they were so happy. This is what they said, this is what they want to see. And like we stated, you know, this is the beginning, this is just the beginning. There's gonna be more of these type of events and this is what happens when, you know, people can work together. I mean, of course, there was a few little things that, you know, I said, "Hey, don't take this criticism personally. You take it and you say, this is how I'm gonna do this one, the next one bigger and better." That's all you do. And it was a really nice event. So I just want to say kudos to Liz and to Alicia, they did a great job. And everybody that was involved, Public Works, you know, the city, the staff. Everybody did a great job, so it was wonderful. And then just on another note, I just want to say thank you to everybody, staff. You know, I know fire, it's really a serious time right now because it's fire season. You know, I, I pray for these guys all the time, our public, you know, our first responders as well. And then just, you know, everybody enjoy your 4th of July and enjoy your day off. That's it.
Your representative?
Yes. I, I'd like to thank the staff for working so hard while I took a vacation. I did go to China, I was able to ride a bullet train for four and a half hours from Beijing to Sion, which is 705 miles, pretty cool. And then, then our guide was so knowledgeable about the country and they said there was a bridge built, okay? So the bridge was built, but how long did it take to connect this bridge? So they did it in 43 hours. You imagine that, connecting a whole bridge and getting traffic going in 43 hours. That's amazing fact there. Most of Shanghai is, has the, Shanghai has the most skyscraper in the world. It's 10 times of all the skyscraper in the US. So imagine how many skyscrapers there. But it's 23 million people living there, so they need it, 'cause everything has to go up. And a small town to them is 1 million people. So I think Selma is just a clan, it's not even a village, it's just a clan. So I know our guide Chucko, when I told him we only had 25,000 people here. So I had a great trip and, and it was great coming home. Thanks.
Thank you. So we've heard everything tonight, great input by the city staff on Friday night. That was an awesome program put on by the bid. Nice to see everybody, Beer Garden, it's cool, Art Center, everybody out there dancing, some, some dancing. Everybody having a fun time and, and like somebody said on social media, this is what our town should be about. Small town, we know each other, we work with each other many, many times and, and we knew each other and grew up with each other. And having an event like that was what our town is all about. And then the reality, right? And then people, you know, came by the, our office and said, "Yours is the only street light in front of your building. It's not on at night." And I told them, "Just watch the council meeting and you'll see." So, I mean, there's always a good with the bad and we're trying to get through the bad and get to the good and make our, and make our city better. We all have our roles to play. And telling the truth and bringing up uncomfortable things is sometimes an important way of doing that. And being a cheerleader for our town is sometimes the, the most important thing to do there. And it just, different, different times call for different actions. Last week, I attended the Fresno Council of Governments and the Fresno County Rural Transit Agency meetings. Those were important meetings with good items to vote on that help benefit our city such as that maintenance services contract. That was an item that I voted on, really important to have that. I attended a Safe Routes to School meeting at, at 4 o'clock before the COG meeting that night and the FCRTA meeting. And that was about finding resources for our schools to make it safer for our kids to get there. And yeah, that's, it involves the roads that the city owns, but it's money that the school can allocate towards those, making those roads better. And the current superintendent really does like speed bumps, you know? It's amazing, now we have someone who likes speed bumps. It's been, that idea has been reigned on for so long, but it's good to have advocates because we need people to slow down around our streets. Going out and talking to people, that is a huge issue. People are speeding, people are, are going too fast on the streets here. And we don't need to give a bunch of tickets, but we need to come up with a way to slow people down. And people dumping trash in the back alley. I'm really looking forward to that meeting next week with Mid Valley because people are sick and tired of having other people dump things in their alley and then being responsible for it and potentially having a code violation. I can't wait to talk about that. These are bad things, right? These are negatives, they're negative. But they're reality and the only way we deal with negatives is by facing them and trying to make them better and make them into positives. That's what we're here to do in city government, is make lives better for our local people. I appreciate staff, I appreciate public safety. It's gonna be really hard, it's so hot, they're out there, Public Works is out there every day. I, I thank them for what, what they're doing. And I hope everyone has a good, a good 3rd of July. We'll be over at the fireworks celebration, looking forward to celebrating that with the city of Selma and Chamber of Commerce sponsored event at the stadium, as Liz said. You know, it's gonna be a little different 'cause it's gonna be a little hotter this year, gonna start a little later. But, you know, we're still gonna have a good time over there. It was a real honor to go to that suicide prevention program downtown at Veterans Park. Salt of the earth people there, veterans who had serious mental problems coming back who didn't make it. And there are a lot of them around here. Another negative, right? No, it's, we gotta talk about it and everybody, the speakers who got up there said, "We just have to talk and communicate." And a lot of the people are saying it would have been better if they would have communicated and it could have, could have saved some people's lives. So let's talk about the negatives so we can solve it and turn it into a positive. And everybody, this meeting is over tonight. I want to say thank you for everybody coming out and hanging in there till the end and we'll see you all at the next meeting. Good evening.